Okay, we're good.
Great.
Okay, good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on December thirteenth, on December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven thirty P M. Pursuant to Section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on December seventh, two thousand twenty-three, and has been posted to the municipal website, W W W princeton nj dot gov slash meetings. Pursuant to the extension of the ongoing state of emergency by Executive Order Number two ninety-two, in accordance with the Emergency Remote Public Meetings Protocol, for local public bodies to conduct a public hearing without physical attendance by members of the public, notice that during this extension of the state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the twenty-fourth day of April, two thousand twenty. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and ought to be maintained throughout the year. And by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton, notices have been placed on all windowed doors of the municipal complex. Claudia, can you call the roll?
Ms. Chen?
Yeah.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. David? Mr. David?
You're muted.
Jim, you're muted.
Hey, I hear you, Jim.
Now he's. You're not muted, but we can't hear you.
You, I don't know what he's saying. You might want to try to call him.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Ms. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum? Mr. Stein?
Here.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay.
You hear me now?
You're welcome.
Yes.
Now we can hear you.
All right.
Okay, good. All right, we have three administrative matters to deal with first resolutions. And one is the, do we deal with these in one vote, Karen, or should we have an individual vote for each one?
I think, I think individual for each one.
Okay, the first one is the two thousand twenty-four annual meeting calendar. The board member should have that. So if there are no objections or potential changes, if someone, do we just, do we have to make a motion and second it? I guess we do, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so if someone would like to make a motion of approval or not, and somebody second it.
Michael, we can't hear you.
I'm over it.
Okay, thank you. Second anyone?
I'll second.
Okay.
Who was that?
Claudia?
Give back.
That was Jim.
Okay, Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes. Okay, the second is the notice of special meetings. Again, that was in everyone's packet. Somebody would like to make a motion on that or have a discussion on it?
I'll move it again.
Thank you. Second anyone?
Sure, second.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Ms. Chen?
All right.
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
The third is the charges for subscribers for agenda mailings. So that is also in your packet. Once again, if someone would like to make a motion?
I'll move it.
Second. Second.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes. Okay, we have two resolutions this evening, and that'll be followed by three applications. But the two, the first resolution is case number Z twenty-two dash two oh seven, two forty-one Harris Road Block seventy-one oh seven Lot Two in the R six zone. The resolution's been, it's in everyone's packet. If there are any questions or discussions on it, let's do that. If not, if someone would like to make a motion for approval.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Yep, okay, Claudia?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes. Okay, our second resolution is twenty Linden Lane, oh, excuse me, it's case number Z twenty-three, Z twenty-three dash three sixty-one, twenty Linden Lane. I don't see the lot block here, but, okay, but it's twenty Linden Lane, and the case number's correct. Again, the resolution's in your packet. If someone has any, if anybody has any questions on it, or would someone like to make a motion?
Uh, board members, before there's a motion, there's two suggestive revisions. One is a clarification on the correct spelling of the applicant's names. I think our records had Amanda Zoe Del Bosio, apparently, no, it really should be Bazo, and her husband Michael Cantwell. So we need to make that clarification. And also, the applicant's attorney has asked that, I think it would appear in paragraph eight of the finding, that's page five, and then also at the very end of the now therefore clause, that the rebuilt garage be referred to as the rebuilt accessory structure. Because you recall during the hearing, the applicant advised they're not using it as a garage, and they don't intend to use it as a garage. So they've asked that the description of accessory structure would be more a more accurate description of what it's being used for. And I, I believe Derek doesn't have an issue with it, but I'll ask him to speak up if he has a concern about that.
No, I don't have any concerns with that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we, so if someone would like to make a motion with the revisions that, that our attorney suggested?
Sure, I'll move to approve.
Okay, thank you. Second anyone?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Stephen. Hey, Claudia?
Ms. Chen?
Please call the roll.
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Here, yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes. Okay, now we have three applications. Our first is previous application that was carried, case number Z twenty-two dash two twenty-four, two forty-six Valley Road, Lot seventy-two oh eight? Lot, is it seventy-two oh eight? Yes, Lot Eight in the R six zone. Who will be presenting the applicant? Is the applicant here, first of all? I don't see a familiar name on the.
I, I, no, I do. I see the applicant, but we need to see her now, and she needs to unmute herself.
I think we need to bring over her daughter, who Claudia's bringing over now.
Okay.
Okay. Hello?
Hey.
Hello, yep. Hi.
Hello.
Hi, this is Chow Danello. I'm here representing my mother, Feng Chow Wu.
Uh, Ms. Danello, what we're gonna do is swear you in.
Okay.
Do you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I swear.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Ms. Danello, is your mom, is your mom here?
I believe so. So she is actually visiting family in China, just, you know, in case there's any technical difficulties. I believe she is called in, but also she asked me.
We see her, yeah, we see her.
Yeah.
Appearing, but we can't see her, so.
Yeah, I think she was only able to call in, uh, in audio. Mom, could you just join in or raise your hand?
Yeah, I see her hands. Right, Claudia, has she been transferred over? Because I see your hand raised on the screen here.
She's under pedalists.
She's, she's been moved over, but she's just has the phone, no camera.
Okay.
All right, well, if she can phone in, that we could accept that since her daughter's here tonight to appear for her. Can she, can she phone in in case we have questions or?
I believe she is phoned in.
Oh, she is, okay.
Yeah, I believe she is, yes. And I saw her flash earlier on when the call just started, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I know just also the purpose is, you know, there's a little bit of a language barrier here, so she was hoping maybe I can better present her, um, her case tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Okay, um, please start.
Sure. So, and I do apologize if, you know, Derek has worked to educate me with the history of the case. I'll do the best I can. Um, and please let me know if, you know, there's anything I'm not clearing in explaining here. There, first of all, I would just like to apologize on my mom's behalf. There's a little bit of a history here that she has done work on her property in regards to the driveway in the past with our permission, and that is a honest mistake. And going forward, we would like to, you know, do everything right, hence this, this is another proposal. If, does everyone have the package in front of them with the drawing here?
Yes, I have it.
Okay, great.
It's been in all the packets, yeah.
Wonderful, so there will be.
And on the website.
Great, so there will be two sheets I will be referring to. One is the map drawing here, and one is also the number of, I guess, questions answered of why my mother would like her driveway expanded. So as far as the general plan, she would like this green section to be expanded. Uh, as far as the variance, variance is concerned, everything else should be up to the ordinance with the exception of the required driveway width at the property line. The requirement here is ten feet, and she would like that to be, the proposed is actually eighteen point eight five feet, so she doesn't have to, um, I guess maneuver indirectly and back out of a really narrow driveway. Does that make sense to everyone?
No, what you're saying makes sense, but I, there's a question on it.
Okay.
Um, Derek, didn't we discuss this at length the last time? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Derek, we're just gonna swear you in for the evening. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful? And I think, Derek, didn't you do just a very, very brief memo?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Derek, I didn't.
Distributed to the board?
Summarize your memo.
Maybe you'd like to?
Yeah, you.
Just explain that.
Sure. Yes, the applicant revised the driveway, and it reduces the width of the driveway along the side lot line, which eliminated the five-foot setback variance. The only remaining variance is for the width of the driveway at the property line, the maximum permitted, as was stated, is ten feet, and I have twenty-two feet, which is what it scales off on the drawing, but.
Okay.
That's the only variance that there is at this point.
Right. Okay, so sh- may I continue with the reasons why she need the driveway to be widened? So that starts with, you know, right now, my mom has worked really hard in expanding this little house into adding more bedrooms and, and a separate unit in the back. So just with the number of people who are living in the house, really, they need more parking spots. And also, the location of the house means it's so close to the Main Street and Valley Road intersection. There's essentially no street parking, and the, kind of the halfway solution, and then I guess the people living there have found is parking on the lawn, which is so unsightly. Valley Road is a beautiful street. There's multimillion-dollar homes down that road. I'm sure if you take a survey with the neighbors, no one wants to see that. So, um, and also, the, of course, the car's been parked on the lawn, has damaged the, the lawn, and when it rains, there's a big puddle. It's just very unsightly. Um, as, so on to the next page. Uh, this expansion does not disturb the neighbors. There's only neighbors to one side of the property. And with the expansion, we believe that this will improve safety. I, I think for everybody's sake, I would love my mother to be able to back out the driveway without, with, directly, without maneuvering. And, um, and this way, I, I think it's also great for property value, and we want to work on improving this house, which is what my mom has done, adding, you know, repainting it, landscaping, have adding solar panels, and just, this is kind of the, will complete her project in expanding this driveway and making this house really what it could be. Yeah, I guess that's my little presentation. Please, is there, is there any questions or anything I did not touch on?
I'm unclear, I'm unclear on what you're asking, sir.
What, what I'm asking, as far as the expansion's concerned? So sir, if you go to this map right here.
See, I can't, I can't look at that map and your face at the same time.
Claudia, is there any way to pull it up?
Yeah, right, you should.
Sharing? Claudia, can, can we do that, or?
That would be wonderful.
It's in the packet, Stephen.
That's the last page. Okay.
No, I, I see it in the packet. I'm just, when she points to it, I can't see where she's pointing.
So here is the way is the existing driveway. As you can see, it's narrow. What my mom's asking to do is to expand it so this green area becomes the driveway, right? Currently, the rule says the, uh, the, the width of the driveway at the property line has to be ten feet, but she's asking for this to be a little bit wider so the cars can come in and out directly.
Well, is she keeping the white portion too as a driveway?
Correct, yes, which is currently, this is a single-car driveway. Oh, there we go. Thank you, Claudia.
So just to clarify then, the total width of the driveway then would be?
So if you, yeah, please, if you don't mind scrolling down, so the, the important part is on the bottom. So please scroll down, and then you can see, yep, that's, that's the key here. So where it says, where it says eleven oh five, so that, that's the width of the expansion.
So then the total.
It doubles the width, right?
Correct, it doubles the width, but it's still essentially just a two-car driveway in terms of scale. It's not super wide, just so. And then we keep with the five feet to the right.
Well, then what would the, would the total width, Derek? Did you say the total width then would be twenty-two feet?
Yeah.
Yes.
So that's to scale, to her calculation, so it's actually eighteen point six five. We could make sure that's the case. If you see her writing on the bottom, it says required driveway width at property line. The, the requirement is ten feet, it's on the bottom, and her proposed says eighteen point six five feet. That's by her calculation.
All right, so, so you're saying that regardless of what, what the, our zoning officer says, if he scales it, which your mother is looking for, is then a total width of eighteen point six two feet?
Correct, that's by her calculation, yes.
Well.
Well, yeah, it's not what your application says.
The dimension of the existing driveway, which is shown at the top of the sheet,
Mm-hmm.
says eleven point five eight feet. And if you look at, and right next to it is the width at the rear of it, the additional width, which is four point three four. When you come to the, when you come to the front, that four point three four becomes eleven point oh five. So if you take the eleven point oh five and the eleven point five eight,
Mm-hmm.
that's, that's, that's the width. That's twone, it's almost twenty-three feet.
Correct, that, that's a very good question. Um, but mom, if you're on the line now, this is, this is a good time to interject, so.
That wasn't really a question, it was a statement.
You know, I, I know why where she made a mistake. I'm so sorry. So she calculated the average width of the driveway, which is totally irrelevant. So if you scroll down here, I, we, I think, Derek, you and I asked her to, to revise this. She did not. Do you see where she did a little bit of equation there? Which, which it says width of the driveway is eleven point eight five plus four point three four plus eleven point oh five plus ten point two six divided by two, and it gives you eighteen? Like, we tried to explain to her that's irrelevant because we're not looking for the average here. We're looking for what is the width at the bottom of the driveway, which, Derek, you're absolutely correct. Where it says the entry of the driveway is twenty-one point seven seven. So I apologize for that.
It's more than that.
Twenty-two.
It's eleven point, it's eleven point five eight plus eleven point oh five.
Okay.
So it's twenty-three foot, twenty-three foot, twenty-three point oh eight feet.
Yes.
You know, I, I scaled it off of her scaled survey. She presented a scaled survey, and then this drawing that's blown up. So I, I would go with the scale, because the other variance was
Okay.
the driveway can't be more than twenty-two feet. So I think.
Okay.
I see.
Is that the width can't be more than twenty-two feet. The average width, as stated, is irrelevant, so.
Okay. I'm sorry, Derek, and what is your number at scale?
It was twenty-two feet.
Twenty-two, okay, great, and we'll.
Twenty-two is the maximum, but you're saying it's eighteen, right, Derek?
I'm saying it's twenty-two when I scaled the drawing, and I was with the applicant.
Oh, twenty-two, okay, I'm sorry.
It's at twenty-two, okay. And I will stick with that. I apologize for the confusion.
Is this, Derek, excuse me, you scaled the drawing with the one that's on the screen now?
No, I, I scaled the drawing that's to scale.
Okay.
Taken off.
All right, no, it's just.
And this was blown up. The smaller drawing that's on the screen was expanded, and so those, it's not to scale. But I scaled the, the drawing that was from the survey that was to scale.
Okay.
And that's where I got.
All right, okay, got it. Okay. All right. So you're asking for a variance to go from the ten-foot to the twenty-two-foot?
Correct, yes.
How many cars you have parking in the driveway?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, could you repeat, um, your question?
The, the curb cut, what is, um, is that remaining as, as is? Is it going back to what it was before it got chopped back, or what happens with the curb cut?
It's.
The curb cut as shown on the drawing is not twenty-two feet. The width of the driveway at the property line is twenty-two feet. The width of the curb cut is less.
Right, so, right, but that curb cut, is that acceptable, uh, at, at the width that it got chopped back to? Um, it, it was altered without?
Permission.
Permission, correct?
Correct.
What, what's the status of that? Is it? Is, is this survey here showing, I guess, the altered curb cut that has been chopped back? Or which, what curb are we looking at? What curb cut?
Derek, can you speak to that?
You have?
Yeah. Derek?
Sure, I'll try to look on the G I S. I mean, the curb was expanded without approval, and then Belgium blocks were cemented back in place, and I think some of them have been knocked over again, um, as the driveway's being used. The driveway's in the public right of way, so um, if the board approves the variance, they would have to go to council to get a license agreement to expand that, that curb.
Okay, but the, but the width of it, if it gets expanded to be maintained as it currently is, is, that's not something that needs us to vote on?
No, it's in the public right of way.
Okay.
You're, you're really concerned with the variance for the driveway width at the property line.
Okay.
Okay, and we, we shouldn't even deal with the curb cut then? Is that correct, Eric? We shouldn't even discuss the curb cut. Okay, thanks. Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Um, no, just appreciate your time. And I know this is not the first time we came with a request. I appreciate your, another consideration on this, and, um, we'd love to hear what the vote is.
Can you?
Yeah.
Can you tell us how many people are currently living on the property and how many cars there are?
I believe there's at least three cars, and with my mom visiting. And the purpose of this uh, also is eventually, my mom, you know, when she retires, she works as a bookkeeper on a, you know, humble salary. This is her little nest egg. So just for her own purpose, I think one of my concern is I want her to be able to back in and out of the driveway when the other role is taken, right? So she can go in and out without having to maneuver other cars out of the way. So that's, mom, please, uh, I don't know if she's having audio issues. As far as I know, I believe there's three cars, and including, that's including hers, or not, no, not including hers, I'm sorry.
So does she live there now?
No, she does not. She lives in West Windsor, but she goes there, she does, she maintains all the landscaping herself. She does a lot of work there. She kind of, you know, cleans the house, so she does a lot there. And the, right now, she's going on and off the lawn, which is just not a, I think, a good solution.
Is there anything that prevents her from parking around the corner?
So, um, this is in the packet that she mentioned. So she says cars cannot park on Main Street or Valley Road, which is very close to the traffic light at the intersection between North Harrison Street and Valley Road. There's restriction to park on Valley Road along the property. On Ewing Street, there are also restrictions to parking cars too, due, due to being near the intersection between Valley and Ewing Street. Um, yeah, so there's, and I, I'm not sure you guys have been there. There is, you know, it's quite a busy intersection. Her house is literally the first house, kind of as you come off the main road from that parking, from that shopping area, so it would just, yeah. Yeah, does that answer the question?
Uh. I don't know.
But, um, you, you could park far enough away from that intersection of, of Valley and Ewing, just far enough in. That, that's not a no-parking street, it's.
Uh, yeah.
You just.
Right.
Park, it's probably like, you know, so many feet from the intersection, right? Just so that it's a safer turn.
Is, is that's you, that's Ewing Street? Is there, there overnight parking allowed on Ewing Street?
That I do not know. Maybe someone else knows the answer to that.
I didn't see any signs about, I, I, I don't know, uh, but I, I saw no signs.
And all, I mean, this is just my personal opinion. She's not the best parallel parker. I, I just, um, again, this is just my personal opinion as a daughter. It's, I, I, obviously, if this does not happen, we'll have to find other solutions. But if this could be expanded, I much prefer her to park in her own driveway um, on a day-to-day basis if possible. Um, on a day-to-day basis if possible.
Well, parking on the driveway, in the driveway, she can do. The question is the width of the driveway at the property line. And secondary, which is not part of our discussion, is the curb cut, which has to go to the council. As, as our zoning officer explained.
Okay.
Steven, does that answer your questions?
I, I think so.
So right now, all we know is that the, there is no approval for the cur, for the opening at the curb cut to be wider than ten feet. Am I?
Correct.
Close. And so my question would be, if that does not get approved. Would it's, would there be any point to having the rest of the driveway? I mean, maybe it could be, you know. I'm just wondering how you, how you would see that. If, if that doesn't get approved by council, is it still worthwhile for the rest of the driveway to be twenty-two plus feet wide?
Uh, personally, to an, oh, sorry, was that a question directed to me or to another?
Yeah, I'll start with you.
For, I mean, from my pers- perspective, hundred percent, um, knowing my mom, she would definitely uh, try to receive approval from the council as well. And for sure, for her, any additional parking for her. Because if you see the house, it is a tiny, you know, in terms of scale, it is small. So any additional space will be to her benefit. And if she, if we first, for, you know, whatever reason, we just do not get the curb. It, it's still a little bit better than not having that entrance, I mean, having more space being taken away. That's ten feet wide versus the twenty-two. So I mean, any space we could get, I, I just don't see how that hurting. And we will definitely pursue this if you guys um, approve this tonight.
Maybe I should ask on the march here. Does it make sense? Can you picture driving in and then being able to utilize that width?
Good question.
Mr. Cohen.
Well, I think the, the, the question, yeah, I understand what you're saying. Well, in theory, there's no parking allowed in the front yard. So there'll be no parking. I don't know what the front yard is. What is that thirty? What's the front yard in this area? Alright, so it's twenty-five. So it's pretty much the front wall of the house. So there's no parking between the front wall of the house and the curb cut. Which is, the dimension on the drawing is twenty-five point seven seven feet. So the question is, if you had a single car driveway, could you maneuver it to get into the parking space? And in my opinion, you could. I mean, you, you know, you might need to get, to use the full width at the, at the setback line. You would need more than, more than the, you need more paving in the front yard, but not necessarily all the way to the street. It's still gonna be with, with just a s- ten foot width. You'd have to come in and angle to the right and then straighten out and pull in. But again, that means that at the back, at the back portion of the paved area. That driveway width is only fifteen feet. It's, well, sixteen. It's eleven point five eight plus four point three four. So to utilize that, when you get towards the end there, it's gonna be, you're gonna be parking two cars. On, if you don't go off the paved area, which most probably you're gonna end up doing. You're gonna need more than, than sixteen feet to get the two cars in there and open the driver's door of the one.
Okay. I think I'm following, okay. Yeah.
The trouble is it tapers towards the rear. It tapers towards the rear. So at the back, it's only sixteen, roughly sixteen feet wide. And to put two cars along there, the two cars, one behind the other. It looks like it's doable. It may not be, but it may not be. I don't know what the, there, there's no dimension on it. But the, the width of the house at the back, if the front, if that dimension is twenty-five point seven seven. The house is probably less than thirty feet wide. Which means that even if you parked at the end of the green area, you're still gonna hang out beyond the front of the house if you had four cars in there. So, so but the bottom line, the, the question you ask Eve is, do you need all that paving? I would say to get four cars in there, you don't necessarily need the full width all the way to the property line. But you need more than just is, just to the front yard, the, the front, front of the house setback line.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, how many people are living in the home now?
Hmm, that, hold on one second. I'm, my mom is, my mom's actually texting me. I don't know why she can't get on audio. I, I would love for her to be able to answer these questions now.
The last time we spoke with your mom at the last meeting, uh, two meetings ago. I believe she mentioned that there's six bedrooms.
Correct.
That they're being rented out.
Correct.
So it's kind of like a rooming house.
No, so from my understanding, it's actually uh, all, uh, like PhD, PhD students. Who uh, from Princeton, who lived there as roommates. And then they are all very quiet, like, you know, there's. Like, she took great care in finding the right type of people, who are all academics. And they just kind of, you know, use this as a very affordable way so they can do their studies. So it's not a messy situation. Yeah.
So your mom doesn't live there now?
Yes.
If what you say that she wants to retire there.
Yes.
If she retires there, will she still have tenants on the premises also?
I honestly, I believe so because there's, it's a bigger house than where she, she currently is in West Windsor. And I don't see how she could afford the whole house without having tenants. And then that's also, a- as you can see, uh, one of her improvements, the house was adding a separate unit. So maybe she can live there and have the tenants live separately. So she can have a bit more privacy. Um, but that's how she kind of, this is her little nest egg that sustains her. But she wants to make it nice. So, yeah.
Okay. All right, Michael, do you have a question?
The um, the actual request for the width is now as of right. She's not asking for a variance for the width. So.
She's allowed, she, she's allowed to have the dr- yes, she can have the driveway with. The question, I guess the question is, Emery, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. So that's not really a relative question. On the, on the table is whether or not the entrance way can be ro- wide, is what we're gonna vote on. Um, I think it's important, Steve, what you pointed out, that the applicant understands while we're talking. Um, there is still the front yard setback restriction. So close to Valley Road legally. Even with the expanded driveway. Legally, technically, you can't park there. So the question, but the driveway itself is long enough, because I did look at that, to not violate the front yard setback. And get four cars in there. Now, you know, we may have, everybody can have their own questions. I agree with that. But we all gotta understand.
Um, yes.
What we need to focus on.
No, yeah, the, the issue is, given the, given the, the way the drawing is shown in Michael's eyes. And it's what I had mentioned earlier. There's not enough wi- width, or let's say length of that side wall. That side from the back, the driveway ends at the back of the house and goes all the way to the street. But the, but the uh, front yard parking limitation limits basically the area you have available to park. From the, from the front wall of the house, basically to the back wall of the house, which is. Which probably is not, even, even small cars are sixteen feet. So that's thirty-two feet if they park bumper to bumper. And additionally. You have the narrow width at the back. So the issue, I guess, Michael, if, if, if I may. We can leave the driveway the way it is, but the parking is only effectively without violating the front parking in the front yard going to allow for two cars.
I'm, I'm sorry.
For small cars.
I'm so sorry to interrupt. So I got a message from my mom. So her, she, she says she's asking for two car ways to access Valley Road. Right now, I think the issue is when there's four cars, it's hard to get out.
Yeah, okay. Well, is, okay, that's, you're right. And as Michael said, there, in theory. You may not be able to park four cars there.
Right.
Because the driveway length behind the front yard setback is not adequate to park four cars.
Okay. You mean the overall air, like the square footage area? That's what you're saying, right?
It's not square footage, it's length, but yes.
Okay. Okay. Um, alright. Well, a lot of great points. Um, I think, I think from my mom's perspective, that the more, uh, the more area she could gain from this, the better it is for her to maneuver different things. And it's up to her to kind of figure out how many cars she can get in there. But it seems, yeah. The, the green era will help her out tremendously if, if that can be approved. So.
I think as Michael said, since we, we're not voting on the curb cut because that has to go to the council.
Yeah, we're gonna have to get there.
There's no reason, and correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, there's no reason for us to vote on the driveway width.
That's allowed. I think we're not voting on, we're voting on the entrance driveway width.
Right.
So all but six inches with the front six inches or whatever, if it, whatever you call the entrance way, is as of right. They're not asking for a variance for the, the whole length of the driveway.
Correct. Just the width of the entrance. Yes.
So they can do the whole driveway except for the entrance, even if we turn down the entrance.
Yes.
Which I'm not recommending turning that down.
Okay.
But the, but the width of the driveway from the property line to the, to the street, to the cartway can only be ten feet. Is that right, Eric?
Yes, sir.
We would love for it to be twenty-two.
Well, that's, that's not hard to, well, I guess.
I did, yeah, uh, you know, for me, if that's something you want to turn down, you turn it down. I'm actually gonna vote for the entrance way.
Thank you.
No, I don't think, I don't think there's, so if we vote for it, Derek, if we, let's say, approve the twenty-two that's requested, and then, then the applicant still has to go to the council to get, what's, they have to go to the council to get approval for the overall curb cut.
Yeah.
And, and that's fine by my mother. That's fine by us. And if, and that's, you know. But we just want to get over the current stuff. And then any yeses will be very much appreciated.
Okay. Alright.
I have a, a, a question. Um, so Derek, how? How, how much of the, the driveway can they park on all the way up to the property line then is acceptable? It's, it's, it's not though, right? They, they have to be set back.
They'd have to be set back twenty-five feet from.
Twenty-five feet.
Property line. So Michael's right, they could fit four cars pretty much within, behind the twenty-five foot setback.
Right.
They're not supposed to park in, in the other part of the driveway. Um, but I mean, as you realize, people do that all the time. They park in front of their garages. If their garage is at the twenty-five foot setback, so. But there's legally enough space to put four spaces in, in the, the expanded driveway. That would meet the front yard setback and the side yard setback.
So the only thing, the only thing we're being asked for then is to approve the curb cut. And the width of the driveway from the property line to the cartway.
Well, not, not the curb cuts, Steve, but yeah, the width, the width of the driveway.
The wi- no, it's the, the width, the driveway is allowed at twenty-two feet. It to the front, to the property line. It's the distance from the property line to the, to the, to the street.
No.
No, no.
At the property line cannot exceed ten feet. She has it at twenty-two feet now. That's the subject.
Okay.
The driveway can't expand immediately to twenty-two feet as it enters the property, as of right. So she'd have to fan that thing out in some geometrical position if she didn't get the variance. So.
So, uh, uh, I'm not trying to beat this into the ground. I'm trying to understand it. So, so the right of way line, which is twenty-two feet, the parking, the driveway at the right of way line is twenty-two feet. And it tapers as it goes back. Then you have, then you have the paved area from the right of way line out to the street. Out to Valley Road. And that, you're saying can only be ten feet?
Right. If you don't approve this, you'd have to replace the curb cut that was taken out without approval. And establish grass back there, you know, I mean.
Okay, so, so the, the, is, is the ten foot driveway width just on Valley Road? Is that?
No, it's everywhere. It came out of neighborhood character. So it's, it's.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so, so now, I, and I wasn't aware of that. So now with neighborhood character, no driveway, no driveway can continue at eighteen or twenty-two feet all the way out to the street, to the cartway. It has to, it can go to the property line, or it can go to the property line. But from the property line to the street has to be no more than ten feet.
Yeah, at the actual prop, at the street line, which is in the public right of way, it's fourteen feet is the maximum. So she'd have to go to council and request, because we can't, we can't grant a variance in the.
Fourteen feet.
So the idea was in neighborhood character to sh- to make cars less prevalent and prominent in streetscape and to reduce driveways and curb cuts and.
And everyone, I just wanna, oh, I'm so sorry. I just want to add one thing here. So I, I believe this new rule that actually um, was set way in, back in two thousand and eighteen. My mom did want to have expand the driveway back then. So this is one thing that she wanted me to say. Which she did not have the funds to do it back then. So now that she had the funds, but the rules changed for her. So she just also wanted to make sure I, I explained that. She always wanted and needed a wider driveway at the entrance.
Okay.
But no money, money back in two thousand and eighteen.
So right now, Derek, do you know what the existing width of the driveway is from the, from Ewing up to the property line? Or from Valley up to the property?
Because this was done without a, you know, the reason we're here is there was a violation issued and it was expanded. So I'm assuming that the, the width at the street is close to twenty-two feet, twenty-one feet.
Okay, uh, and, and, okay. On this, on the larger drawing, it shows it narrower than that. But, but the issue is that it can't be more than ten foot without a variance.
Right.
Okay. And the fourteen feet is what again?
It's at the actual street.
Yeah, at the, at the, at where the driveway meets the Valley Road.
Right.
Public right of way, yep. Or the, the actual street.
And how far back can that, how far back can that fourteen feet go?
Well, if you're only allowed ten, it has to taper down to the ten. You know, if you're allowed ten feet at the property line and. You know, if you're allowed ten feet at the property line and the street opening is fourteen, you'd have to taper down to the. Within that public right of way, you have to taper down to the ten feet width.
And then expand out again, okay.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
No, no.
Now I understand it. Okay, that's a, that's pretty weird, okay. Okay. You you want to add anything else? Would you like to say something else or?
Me? Or so, sorry.
Yes.
Me? Oh, uh, please vote yes, please. My mother will make my mother and me very happy for Christmas, I don't know, but thank you for doing this, this, appreciate you guys doing this.
Do we want, we're gonna go, we're gonna open this up to the public in a moment. Does anybody want to discuss this further before we do that? Okay, hearing no one want to talk about any further, we're gonna open this portion, this portion of the meeting to the public. Uh, if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to discuss this or comment on it. Please raise your hands on the button at the bottom of the screen and we will recognize you. Claudia, has anybody indicated they'd like to discuss this?
No hands.
Okay, all right, just wait a couple of seconds here. And all right, if no one's raised their hands, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Uh, you're you, the applicant are allowed to to make a closing statement, if you'd like. Before we go into executive session to discuss it and vote.
Um, closing statement, um, we accept any vote. You you guys have taken your valuable time to come to listen to me and my mom's proposal. And um, we appreciate your time and uh and consideration, and I hope your vote is yes. The end, thank you very much.
Okay. All right, let's, we're going to executive session now. If anybody want to discuss this or if someone would like to make a motion.
I'm trying to just.
Yes.
Clear, wait, so are we saying that? We're gonna, we will approve a fourteen fourteen foot curb cut? And then, once you get to the property line, then it can expand out, so it'll come in and then has to go narrow for the curb cut?
Well, that's that's sort of the way I understood, it could be fourteen feet at the street.
Right.
Going to ten, Derek, tell me if I'm wrong, fourteen feet at the street, ten foot at the property line. Then it can expand out beyond that, beyond the property line.
Oh, geez.
That's correct.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's, so it has to, it it's wide, it's fourteen feet, it tapers to ten, then it has, then it widens to twenty two.
Yeah, that's not a good driveway, I, that's not a good driveway.
That's.
You had your hand up, you want to say something?
Um, well, wait, excuse me, Donna, I I'll let you speak, I'm just, I just want to, is that, is my explanation correct, Derek? Ten fourteen feet at the street line, at the curb, tapering to ten at the property line. Then widening to twenty two beyond that.
That's without the variance, correct?
The order.
And then we don't have to vote on it.
That's without the var.
If it's going to ten or not.
I just want to know what, I want to know what the requirement is, that's what I'm trying to determine.
You're correct, that is the correct zoning requirement.
That's not good.
All right. Okay, Donna, please, or Michael, do you want to say, you started, you want to say anything else?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Um, why I'm gonna vote for this. Um, first visiting the site over about a month ago. You don't park on the south side of of Valley Road in this area. Because Valley Road becomes two ways going towards a shopping center. So there's no place to park. On the south side of Valley Road, you don't park on the north side of Valley Road. This is close to an intersection, in my opinion, that's an un- slightly unusual intersection. I ended up parking on on Ewing, but you gotta park away from the, you know. Um, the the actual corner intersection. Um, I don't know what the length is, but it's enough. Um, so I I just think this is a special area. With its relationship, the Valley Road, a busy street, and the shopping center entrance. And the lack of parking in front of the house. So for me, I will support it. And again, as I say, the um, whether or not the municipality mayor and council. Give the curb cut, which I think, I think they might, um, so I'm, I'm fine with it.
So we're now going to. Okay, so if, so the the there, the applicant is asking for twenty two feet. From fourteen feet at the street and carrying straight back. That's gonna be the, that's gonna be what we're gonna vote on. But I'm not disagreeing with you, I think it makes sense, because going from fourteen to ten to twenty two is crazy.
Yeah, that's what the board should vote on, the twenty two straight back, because.
Twenty two all the way to the street.
Yeah.
Is that what you understand, Michael?
Yes.
Okay, good, oh, okay, Donna, you had.
Yeah, I I just disagree with Michael. I I don't see any um positive reasons um to grant the variance. I think that there's, I don't see anything wrong with the property and the existing driveway. Um, I think it's just the way the house is being used that makes it a bit of an inconvenience. And um, I I just don't think that justifies a variance.
I I actually think in this particular case, it's it's an unusual situ- it's, in a sense, I hate to even use this word. It's a hardship because there's so much going on at that intersection. With the three lanes, two going, one going straight, one going right, and then coming out of the shopping center. So at that corner, there are three lanes of traffic, there's no place to park there. And so, and trying to maneuver with the current requirement of the driveway width. Tapering to a much narrower width at the property line, then opening up to what's allowed as of right. Creates a really awkward situation, which I don't think, quite frankly, anybody's gonna do. There's those packs straight out over the grass and onto the street. So, and and I think, I think in this case, it's warranted because of the. The complexity of the parking situation on Valley Road. So that's my two cents worth, but so any other questions? Uh, Donna, do you have anything else you want to add or should?
No, thank you.
Okay, and and board members?
I I don't know whether it's our business, though, or not, to say, it wouldn't be so complex. If there wasn't the anticipation of at least four cars being parked there. And a- again, I'm not exactly sure if that's our business to even ask how many people live there. I what, that's, I mean that sincerely, I'm not exactly sure.
Derek, I believe in your earlier memo, there was some, wasn't there, wasn't there a previous issue with respect to tenants? Or am I not recalling your earlier memo correctly?
Uh, that's correct, um, there were some violations with housing, uh, room rentals, um, they were corrected. So an accessory dwelling unit was applied for for the rear addition that the board granted. Uh, a variance for the rear yard setback probably five or six years ago, and that was constructed. Um, the house has been, the main house in front is being re- reestablished as a single family house, which is rented to a group of people. Um, so that's legal, it's been registered with the housing department, as has the uh, the the accessory dwelling unit in the back. Because.
How many cars, given the nature of the population of the house, how many cars are required by the ordinance?
It's two spaces, there's no no requirement for the accessory dwelling unit in the single family.
It's only two spaces.
Or bedrooms, so.
So illegally, you only have to have two cars, one side by side alongside the house. And that would fit between the front yard setback and the rear of the paved area.
You know, I I I agree with you, but the two parking spaces is the minimum required. As of right, you can have more than two, as long as you can fit it, fit it in.
But it only fits with a variant.
Exactly, but but the, but with no variance, you have to have two cars. Which is what is required, and two cars will fit on that paved area.
With no variance, four cars can still get back there, but they would have to do it pinched in by the road.
Correct, and I would just want to add.
You're gonna have six cars back there.
Hang on, hang on.
Just a real safety issue too.
Legally, god, I'm sorry.
Let us, let us finish here.
Oh, sorry, go on.
Let us finish, you'll get it, go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, just, it's a minimum of two. They can have as many cars back there as they want, as long as it doesn't violate side yard. You know, and 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 rear yard. It's only a minimum, it's two minimum.
That's right.
As of right, they can have four, six, whatever.
Yeah, as long as they can fit those cars in the in the paved area of the driveway. Between the front yard setback line, that's front yard setback line and the back of the paved area. That's it, maneuvering is a whole different situation.
Yep.
That's right, maneuvering, maneuvering is is a separate problem. So, so there, but the the code, they may have more than two. And if they park in the front yard, if somebody, if it's, if the municipality chooses to enforce. No parking in the front yard, it's problematic. But you're right, if they can get four cars, six cars, whatever, in that paved area, that's their problem.
Sir, may I add, sorry, um, I just read this little excerpt I see in the writing. It says, uh, ordinance will result in practical difficulties of unnecessary hardship. Inconsistent with the general purpose intended ordinance. Uh, in terms of, I'm, this is just, you know, someone who visits occasionally, practical difficulties and unnecessary hardship. So we understanding is all she's asking for is just at the entrance, for the entrance to be a little bit wider, right? We're not asking for even for more area, we're just making.
We all, we understand that, we understand that at this point.
Right.
It's it's, there there are a bunch of, there are a bunch of different issues here. But uh, the the, it's just carrying that driveway straight out to the street. At the, at the whatever, twenty two foot width.
Right, so it's like, we're, for making the people who live there having to do a weird thing to back out of it. So if it's possible, like, isn't it better, and also for safety purposes, instead of hitting each other, you know, different cars in the driveway?
Session right now, aren't we?
Oh, I'm so sorry, yeah, maybe I can't speak, I apologize.
Yeah, we're 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 okay at this point, I think we all understand the situation. Stephen, what did you say?
Nothing. I'm I'm not gonna vote for this, because I think they're gonna turn that whole area into a parking lot. And I think with six or eight bedrooms, possible bedrooms are gonna be eventually six or eight cars in there. And I think it's gonna extend out to the street, and it's gonna be a municipal parking lot for the apartment. Now, we originally approved that house as a single family dwelling, and it was, uh, the daughter had said that. The owner didn't ask for the bigger driveway at the first, because she didn't have money. But, you know, they, clearly it was always gonna be an apartment house. And it eventually became an apartment house, and I, I don't see any reason why to approve it, so I'm I'm not good with it for it.
Okay, I I I'm sorry, I don't agree with you. The ordinance requires two cars, if they park more, they're violating, if they park more, excuse me, if they park more. And those cars extend out beyond or into the front yard setback, that's a violation. The curb, the width of the driveway coming out is a separate issue. That requires a variance, because it's only allowed fourteen feet and has to taper to ten feet at the property line. So that's, that's, but saying that they may do something in the future is speculating. I'm not, I'm not saying they won't, but I can't, I can't say definitively they will. So I think it's going from the twenty two to the ten to the fourteen is. That's, that's a very awkward situation. And and it's brought about by the fact that parking on this, on this, in this location on the street is is very difficult.
You know, it's brought about because a single family house has been turned into an apartment building.
No, it's, that's not, I don't think that's the issue. I mean, that was, that was an issue a while ago, that was settled, I believe. And and so it's, I don't think that's the issue before us right now.
Well, it it's causing that number of of cars, it's a single family house plus an ADU that. Is trying to fit four cars, right?
They're roommates, right? They're roommates, oh, sorry, sorry.
One second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's the four cars the issue. I think, I think, Bernice, the ordinance only requires two cars, two for the house and none for the ADU. And they can get two cars on the paved area that they're showing. And they're asking for just to carry that out to the street. Now, it's speculating, will they put more in there? You know, who knows? Who knows if they will?
But I think that's part of the reason why the the width has a ha- has a limit is. Part, you know, to to control that a little without someone needing to police how many cars are parking in a setback.
Yeah, no, I I understand, but I don't think limiting the curb cut is gonna do that. But limiting that paved portion of driveway, I think, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I I do recognize it is a, there there are some particularities to being close to that intersection. Um, I I I think twenty two feet is, it it it's a lot to to ask for to. To 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 go to that width. Um, you know, I I actually think something like going to fourteen feet at the property line may be more appropriate. You get the fourteen foot curb cut, you just carry that back and then they flare out.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't take, I don't, excuse me, I don't take issue with that. I think fourteen feet may be workable, but that's the issue before us. Not the, not to the width of the driveway that goes back. So if if.
Yeah, so I'm saying fourteen feet, property line, fourteen instead of, instead of either ten or twenty two.
Okay.
Steve, I I think just, just let the members speak. You don't, I, no offense, you don't have to counter everything that people.
Okay, I'm, I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be argumentative. Fine, speak.
Uh, okay, my, yeah, my only point was, you you know, we're talking about, this is really weird, you go from fourteen to ten to twenty two. I'm i- i- in in um, my opinion, I think. Uh, carrying the fourteen feet at the property line and then just a single flare out um to. Uh, where they need to be seems appropriate and not excessively uh wide. And um, it can a- accommodate, i- it it should be able to accommodate what they're looking for.
I agree with your assessment as well, I think that that, that's a good even. Uh, because across the street, as we saw last time, there's a huge curb cut, it's like forty feet. And this would be just mirroring that on the other side of the street, and I think it would look terrible. And I think that your plan, fourteen feet straight back, allowing for that, rather than having to come into ten, just make that a straight in and then go out. I think that's a reasonable um, uh, solution, personal, so.
Do we have, um, can we, what just occurred to me is if it, we, if it went to twenty two straight back. How does that affect the impervious coverage of the overall piece of property? Seems like it would, I don't know if we, if that has been calculated or not.
They're gonna have to do a stormwater management system.
So, uh, oh, we're sorry, Derek, there, my. So, uh, oh, we're sorry, Derek, there, my mom does have the calculations there in that map page.
Are not the proper calculations.
Oh, they're not? Oh, okay.
That's not a plan.
Okay.
That'll come after you get it, if you get approved.
Okay.
Okay, I guess.
I, I think part of what's underlying some of our, some, the concerns of some of us is that, for me. Is that not everything has either been done. Accurately or consistent with. Approved behavior, like the curb cut being made larger than it was allowed to be. And I think most people would understand that what was done there would, would not be acceptable behavior. So that, that kind of, that, that's what, besides just the idea of the ten to the fourteen to the twenty. You know, that, that is a little hard for me to follow, but I also think it's, it's. It's hard to feel. At ease about, you know. Roommates versus a single family versus a rooming house, I mean, it's kind of. In some ways, none of our business, but it is our business for, you know, to make sure that a property doesn't. Become something that it wasn't originally meant to be, which is in a single-family. Um, neighborhood and not have it become a rooming house, really.
Totally fair comment, and I just wanna know that across the street, that is a multifamily home I would, you know, apartment to. And then I think her issue is she sees this super wide driveway with multiple cars coming in and she's like, oh, why can we have that? But totally fair comment, for sure.
I think this is executive session now, right?
Yeah, just let us speak at this point. Okay, any other comments from the board? Someone wanna make a motion?
How we do a motion if, uh, if we, what is the motion on? Is it, uh, which, which solution are we proposing?
Well, what's the one you support?
I think the one that Bernice said with fourteen feet at the curb. Back to the property line and then it can flare out, so it has a more unified look to it. Still gives a little more width to enter and exit the, uh, the, the property, but then flares out. I think that seems, to me, it seems like the most reasonable, um, solution.
And, uh, Derek, even at fourteen feet, would they still need a stormwater management plan? I can't hear you, you're muted.
Excuse me, it doesn't have anything to do with the width of the driveway, it's the added impervious coverage of more than four hundred square feet. And, and they do have a plan that they're working on, but the board doesn't need to discuss that, it'll be reviewed by the municipal engineer.
Alright, so, so Jim, that would be subject to approval by the governing body. Oh, no, wait, would they still need to approve the curb cut opening?
The cut, the curb cut was opened without approval, it was without approval and now it's gonna be open. So I think they need to get some kind of approval from the council and you can, should recommend what you think should be in the, the, uh. Public right of way, cause it does mention in our code that the maximum width of a driveway at the, the street is fourteen feet. But that's the public right of way, which we can't really grant a variance on, on, so.
Okay, so it'd be subject to that condition and also stormwater management plan. And from what I'm hearing, it appears as if, uh, board members feel it's hardship. As in, uh, should we say C-one hardship, is that, is that the thought? It's not so much of a C-two, or, or perhaps it is. What, what are your thoughts on that?
Go ahead, Michael, please.
Oh, you're muted, Michael.
Karen, actually, I have a question before, um, that, um, seeing as, you know. Um, Jim's proposal, which seems to have more support, is not the applicant's proposal. So do you have to ask her if she might wanna agree to that?
I don't think she has to agree, I guess we can ask her, since she's, but i- if this is the direction of the board. Uh, once the board votes, your mom can't come back with the same thing again and say, you know. Can you reconsider it? So at this stage of the game. You could either say, well, if we're not gonna get this, then my mom wants to, you know, withdraw it and rethink it, or.
Right.
If what you're hearing, you think will, uh, work for your mom, then, um, the vote could go ahead. But it's really not a matter of the applicant likes it unless they dislike it so much now that they just wanna withdraw it. They say, never mind, we, we, uh, we don't want, we don't wanna have this vote.
Okay, sorry, that's a question directed at me, right? May I answer that? Yeah, okay, so it sounds like to me the twenty-two feet is a no-go, cause for a variety of reasons. I had some, two yeses potentially, but that's not gonna, we need a, like a, a majority, so that's no. So, for me, I'm, I'm so sorry that my mom's not here to say, I think it, the fourteen feet sounds totally reasonable. It sounds practical, you go from fourteen to fourteen and then it fans out. But more importantly, even if she applies for anything else, I just don't think you guys would so, say yes, cause this is. I don't know, for the nth time that we brought this before you guys and you've given it all the thoughts and consideration you could give. So the fourteen feet sounds like a totally reasonable solution to me, but if I say yes to that, I mean, there's. The, it's not like there is another solution to this, correct, correct?
I don't think so.
Right, okay.
Uh, that's correct, yeah.
Right, so I mean, whatever, at this point, I think anything we can get to resolve her maneuvering issue, I would take. I don't, you know, you guys have considered been more than fair, so I think the fourteen feet. Um, sounds good, let me just text her to make sure, like, uh, I hate for her to be mad at me after this. Sorry.
The, the truth of the matter is at this point, the, the vote is conjecture on.
Oh, okay.
It is, but I think Michael raised the question, so.
But if you do vote on the fourteen feet once it's proved, that means we have the variance, right?
You have the variance for fourteen. Sub- subject, yeah, you'll have to deal with the curb cut with the governing body, but.
Okay.
You'll have the distance at the property line, yeah.
At, at fourteen?
Yep.
Okay. I'm so sorry, give me one moment, quiet when she respond, gosh.
Well, in, while, uh, Ms. Nell's waiting for her mom, um, Jim, I started to ask you, since it's your motion. Is it, is it your thought that it's a hardship because of. Which we location of the property, configuration of the property, or do you think it's more? You know, as we've heard in other cases where it's not a, exactly a hardship, but it's a better alternative. Well, you know, the phrase is usually better zoning alternative for the property.
Um, it is, I mean, well, it is a difficult positioning as has been described, just cause of the. The, the way the road changes widths and its proximity to the shopping center and the traffic, so that, that does exist. And I think it's kind of both, but, um, so.
Well, it can be bo- it can be both. You can, it can be proposed as both.
It actually was Bern- Bernice the one that raised it, I don't wanna steal her thunder on her.
No, absolutely.
So, uh, it's, um, it's really hard to bring it up, so I'm not taking credit.
I- i- it is the location of the, the property.
Yeah.
And, um, yeah, a bit of the configuration with where the driveway is on the property, so it's both.
Okay, so we have a motion.
I think, yeah, I think at this point, um, is there a second for the motion?
Yeah, we need it, we need a second.
A second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion before we vote on it? Okay, Claudia call, now, just, the, the motion is fourteen feet, a curb cut of fourteen feet.
No, not curb cut, it's fourteen at, at the property line.
Fourteen going back to the property line, right, okay, out to the street and they have to go to them, go to the council to get them to ratify.
You should give a recommendation on the curb cut, is should it be fourteen feet? The council's gonna look to you, I mean, the existing one seems to be. The survey was predated when. The existing curb cut was expanded. And the existing at the str- before it was expanded, it was sixteen feet at the curb.
So it wasn't compliant then, right?
No, but that was existing, you know, that was prior to, uh, that was a pre-existing condition.
Alright, so, so, sorry, no, go on Bernice. Um, so I, I, it, it sounds to me like if it's, um. Going from, uh, you know, they're allowing for a bit of a flare on each side. So whatever the appropriate ratio is that they're using right now for, you know. Width at the property line to the curb cut, including the flare should be what carries through. I, I don't know what that formula is, but I, I'd imagine there's something they're using. Does that make sense?
The, the existing curb cut is sixteen feet.
Sixteen.
If you expand the driveway opening at the property line to fourteen feet, it's still gonna be off skewed. So if you authorized a curb cut of approximately twenty feet, that would line up. More with it, allow them to get into the fourteen, you know, the expanded driveway, so.
Yeah, uh, uh, that seems appropriate, cause then you'd get the flare, the flare on both sides.
Yeah, it doesn't, but it, it pretty kinda comports with where the fourteen is, so.
Yeah.
I mean, you have to recommend something to the council.
So Derek, sorry, you lost me there, I'm not quite understanding this part of it. So because it's like the fourteen feet and the curb doesn't line up exactly, right? So we're talking about kind of.
Yeah, where the, how wide the curb is, and they act, act the street, the curb is. Right now, and this is before it was expanded, cause this survey was before the Belgium block was removed. But it's sixteen feet, and I'm saying if you expanded that out another four feet. It would provide better access to the fourteen-foot opening.
Gotcha, okay. So we're making the curb cut in total twenty, so we can access the fourteen fully, right? That's what we're saying, understood, okay.
Yep.
You know, I respect all of your opinions, I, the, all, everything that's been said, but I'm still gonna vote no for this.
Alright, you say, uh, Claudia, are you taking the, the, the roll call vote now?
We have to do the roll call, is that the last one?
Mr. Chair. Yeah, we have a motion and a second.
Yeah, no further discussion, and let's vote, Claudia.
Ms. Chair.
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreger?
No.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. It's approved.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm gonna count that as a win for me to my mom. Okay, thank you so so much.
Happy holiday.
Happy holidays, I so appreciate it, thank you, bye.
Till the next time.
Oh, no, please, no.
Can we take a quick five-minute break?
You're right, Jim.
Yes, please, okay, it's, um, it's, uh. Eight fifty-five, nine o'clock, we'll reconvene.
Thank you.
What are you eating, Jim?
Uh, one of those little peanut butter cups.
Oh, man. Sounds good.
What are you eating?
Um, pretzel tins.
Those are good. Probably healthier than a peanut butter cup.
No, but not nearly as good.
No. No, not, when we go back in the session together, won't be able to be, having, be able to have little snacks. At the dais, no snacks in the dais.
Hello, can you hear me? Seconds here before nine o'clock, yes?
You can hear me, okay, good.
Not quite nine yet, so. Okay, it's nine PM, we're back in session again. We're now going to hear our second application, case Z twenty-three dash four oh six. It's six oh one Ewing Street, um, block fifty-five oh one, lot four. In the OR two zone, uh, Karen is ever, the noticing in order?
Yes, yes, it is, the board has jurisdiction tonight.
Derek, can you summarize your memo for us?
Miss, Mr. Chair, uh, this is Chris, Azia, uh, before we get started, can we bring, um, our witnesses over? I believe they're, they're in as attendees. Um, we have Jamie Herring. Dr. Chris Russo, Russo, excuse me, Chris Rudman, and Paul Phillips.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'll, uh, give a brief overview and then Justin Lesko is here as well, um, and he had, he might have some planning comments, um. We're here tonight to hear the application of six oh on Ewing Street. They, um, the current section, they are seeking a D four floor area ratio, um, to permit a three hundred and seventy-four square addition to the rear of the middle building of the, uh, three properties on site. The property is, uh, located in the O R two zone, consists of three existing office buildings on a ten point seven acre site, and the site also contains three hundred parking spaces, two hundred and eighty-five regular spaces, and fifteen handicapped accessible spaces. Um, they are seeking a D four use variance to permit a three hundred and seventy-four square foot addition, which will provide an additional patient room and a meeting room for an existing doctor's office. Uh, there's been some discussion amongst staff, uh, and the applicant of whether the existing building is an existing, is it professional general office building or a combination of a professional laboratory research office building? Um, although the uses in the building do contain laboratory research uses, staff and I believe the applicant considered the building to be a professional office building. Um, the current ordinance allows for an F A R incentive if there is a certain percent of the building is based to be exclusively used for a lab and research use. Um, for example, the maximum F A R is sixteen percent, but it's conditioned upon forty-five percent of the building being used for laboratory and research. The applicant is not proposing that. Um, if they, that, that incentive requires a deed restriction, which, uh, requires the applicant to basically either vacate that portion of the F, uh, the variance or the additional F A R or to raise the, uh, the room. Um, so they're not doing that. It's a little background on this property. This project was approved in nineteen eighty, and the maximum F A R at that time was eighteen percent. And the F A R subject of that property on the site plan, uh, was sixteen point four percent. The applicant's engineer calculates the existing F A R to be sixteen point six percent. Um, there's no record of any other additions to the building. Um, the maximum F A R in the F A, in the O R two zone was reduced from the eighteen percent that it was in nineteen eighty to ten percent in nineteen eighty-six. Um, the existing F A R, this property is grandfathered, so it's considered a, you know, legal non-compliant, uh, professional office use. The request for the additional F A R, um, would be based on the current maximum F A R of ten percent for general office use. So the existing is sixteen point six. The addition of the three hundred and seventy-four square foot proposed building brings that total to sixteen point six nine. Um, as I mentioned before, uh, the incentives are not being used in this application. Um, there's only one other site issue we wanted to bring to the board's attention, and that con- concerns a trash enclosure, which was, it appears where the proposed addition was previously used for, as a trash, uh, enclosure, and the dumpsters have been moved to the northern corner of the parking lot, uh, where several parking spaces were located. Excuse me. We, we would ask the applicant address the, uh, the trash collection at the site. Um, the current location is not complying, and we do require that trash have an enclosure. Um, so we asked them to speak to that. The board is, uh, aware that the D four variance requires five affirmative votes. Um, if they're also aware that they don't, the applicant doesn't need to demonstrate that the site, um, is uniquely suited, but that the site can accommodate the problems associated with the increased uh, floor area than, uh, is permitted by ordinance. And that's a brief overlay of the application. I have, uh, Dustin Lesko here provide some planning testimony or, you know, overview. Um, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to, to try to answer them.
Justin, we just need to swear you in. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, and thank you, Derek. Um, I issued a memo on December eighth, but I, I think Derek summarized, uh, most of the background. I just had four comments within it that I'll go over very briefly. Um, the first one was similar to what Derek just said about the trash enclosure. Um, the second one is not necessarily F A R related, but when I was on site, uh, there was a bicycle locked to itself, uh, against the trash enclosure, um, and I had noticed that there was only one bike rack kind of in front of the uh, uh, building B, uh, serving the, you know, ten acre parcel. Um, so a question i- if, uh, the applicant could consider providing more bike racks for the employees and customers of the building, uh, preferably if they could be, you know, if there were multiple, uh, due to the size of the site. Uh, there will be some bike lanes going in on Nor- North Harrison, um, with another project. So, you know, the municipality is building out the bike network. Uh, the third comment I had was just related to the applicant's testimony, and I would imagine Mr. Phillips, uh, is going to give that. And then the fourth was just related to, uh, what Derek mentioned that, um, initially it appeared the applicant was using the, uh, research uses to get that F A R bonus. Um, it doesn't appear, uh, to be the case anymore. Uh, so other than that, I don't have any comments, but I'm here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Board members, any questions of Mr. Bridger or our engineer? Okay, all right. Mr. DeGrazio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, for the record, my name is Christopher DeGrazia from the law firm of Fegory, Drinker, Biddle, and Reath, here on behalf of the applicant, H P six oh one Ewing L L C. And as Mr. Bridger and Mr. Lesko, um, addressed, we're here for a minor site plan and a floor area ratio va- uh, variance to allow for a modest addition to an existing commercial building that essentially will allow the expansion of a dentist's office that has been there for, um, over twenty years. Um, we think that, um, this use itself and the availability will help to promote, um, uh, the public good through providing services to the community. And we believe that because this site is fully developed and we're proposing this within the development of the site, that it could fully, fully accommodate any type of, um, impacts, uh, with regard to some de minimis and little amount of additional s- square feet added to the building. Um, to just orient everybody, we are at six oh one Ewing Street is the address. It's block five five oh one, lot four, and it is within the O R two um, zone of the former, former township. As Mr. Bridger had indicated, this was presented to the board in, I guess, nineteen eighty, where it was approved as essentially, uh, professional biz, uh, it was called, and still is called Princeton Professional Park. So the use was proposed mostly as professional offices with a real emphasis on medical office type use, therapy, dentist's offices, and pretty much has remained so, um, from its, uh, I guess it was constructed later than the approval date in nineteen eighty-four. And then as, uh, Mr. Bridger pointed out, um, the zoning changed in nineteen eighty-six and the F A R was reduced from eighteen to ten. And then at some point, the ordinance was amended again, um, allowing a range from ten to sixteen percent to incentivize, uh, some uh, research, laboratory research. And although we do have some laboratory research components, this has been and has, and will continue to be a professional, uh, office park. Um, they're organized in three buildings. And, uh, just for the record, we are looking at, um, there is existing today seventy-seven thousand three hundred and eighty-four square feet, and we are proposing seventy-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight square feet. So the total increase again is three hu- excuse me, three hundred and seventy-four square feet. Um, we've found a great location right next to the existing dental office, which happens to be at the rear of the middle building, which is perfect. And it could be easily expanded into an area that was once once used as a trash, um, a trash, uh, area that has, um, it, a trash enclosure. So it basically can expand into trash enclosure. Um, we're proposing some landscaping. Uh, we'll be happy to add some additional bike racks, as pointed out by your planner. And, um, with that being said, I'd like to introduce our first witness who's a representative of the owner. This would be Jamie, Jamie Herring. And I would like to have Jamie, I don't see him yet, but I'd like to have him sworn in.
Okay, Mr. Herring.
Karen, should we swear in everybody, all the witnesses at this point?
Uh, sure, we could do that. Uh, let's see, that's Mr. Herring, Mr. Russo, Mr. Rudman, and Mr. Phillips. Gentlemen, do you all swear or affirm that your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I do.
So, uh, Mr. Herring, um, I was hoping you could tell us a little bit about the property and what we're proposing here today. Oh, you're, you're not coming through.
We can't hear you.
No, can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Uh, thank you for listening to me tonight. Um, I'm the owner of six oh one Ewing. The six oh one Ewing is a, uh, a medical professional office property that was built in nineteen eighty-four and is predominantly consisted of dentists, uh, medical therapy, and some profession, some other professional uses. Uh, over seventy-five percent of those tenants, in one form or the other, have still occupy the space from when it was built. Uh, the property, the property, I, I, my, my guess is most of you have actually been to the property. You, you live in Princeton. Uh, it is, it is, uh, many advantages of abundant and accessible parking. It's easy first floor access to suites. There's a dramatically unique planted lobby and, uh, well, a well-balanced set of suites that have a considerable light. Patients enjoy coming to the property, uh, maybe not so much if they're having an invasive procedure, but, uh, uh, and, and the doctors as well. We, we, uh, we know that, we know this because basically the majority of the tenants, um, continue to renew, and we now, you know, we maintain a occupancy of around ninety-five percent. Ninety percent have been there for over twenty years. This, the size of each suites, each suite varies and, but since they're linearly, um, laid out, it's, it's, uh, it gives opportunities to allow tenants to expand and contract there. Uh, Fogarty and Russo, formerly known as Tai and Fogarty, has been a tenant at the building for over twenty years, uh, but in, but in two different spaces. They expanded about ten years ago by switching suites. Uh, and today, uh, we, we don't have capacity for them to expand further unless we give them, um, this additional minor, uh, expansion to allow them to increase their operatories uh, and staffing and staff rooms. The area is, as, as Chris said, basically a little bit over three hundred square feet. Um, and we're, we're proposing to put it there. They, they shared the wall with the former trash area. And we, we have two trash areas, one in front of building B, uh, C, and, uh, and, and what this was formerly in front of building B, a trash area. Uh, we located it over to building A along the perimeter, but, um, but in terms of what our plans would be, is to locate it in adjacent to building A internal in the site, as long, uh, in which, which, which I think will uh, be, be even less visible and, and, uh, and provide access to the tr- to the trash, trash group. The, uh, our architect, Chris Rudman, can, can show you on a site plan wh- which area we're talking about here. The, the, there's one, uh, we, there's one additional bin which is located in, in, uh, front of building C, right next to the other tra- to the trash bin that is for recycling. Trash is picked up twice a week, and it has been, and recycling is picked up once a week. Um, I think there was one other question you have, r- r- maybe it wasn't raised, but I'll just address it. Is, uh, uh, there's a small condens- uh, condenser unit which would supply the HVAC for this, um, this bump out, and it would be located adjacent to all the other condenser units which are on the interior perimeter of, uh, the buildings. And this is right next to, uh, the other, some of, one of the other condensers. So that's, that's basically, uh, our general summation. Um, I, I, I can, I'm available for questions.
Board members, any questions of Mr. Harry?
I have a quick question. Have you not done, have you not done any other kind of improvements to that building since nineteen eighty-four? In terms of additional land or additional space?
No additional space. We spent an enormous amount of money uh, on, on the facade and, and the plantings, both interior and exterior. And, uh, um, I, and, and on, on, uh, um, environmental improvements sort of in terms of L E D lights. Uh, but we, uh, but we have not added any, any additional space.
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Chair?
Okay.
I was just going to say if there's no other questions, I, I'd like to bring up my next witness. Okay. Um, so let's, uh, have our architect and, and, um, come up. This is Chris Rudman.
Chris, are you there? Yeah, good evening, board.
Yeah, so you, you've been sworn in, but we still have to have you qualified, so, uh, I would like you to tell us a little bit about your education and license.
Sure. Um, I would have, uh, Bachelor's of Architecture from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I'm a licensed architect. Um, I'm with J R S Architect, which is located in Princeton, New Jersey. Um, I've been with J R S for twenty-two years. Um, and I've given professional testimony in front of boards like this before.
And, and you said your license, New Jersey, and your license remains current?
Correct.
We'll accept him as the next court witness.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, before we get started, uh, Chris, let's mark this. It's our presentation, our exhibit presentation. It's, uh, I'm not even sure how many slides. Would we have a, um, I think nine, nine slides. It was submitted to the municipality. I guess it's also on the website. Um, and we can identify this as A one.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, thi- this first slide here is just an overall scenario of the site. Um, Jamie had mentioned that there's three buildings on the site, A, B, and C. Uh, the proposed project location is on the back of building B. Um, that is suite B sixteen right here. Um, this is the location of the proposed addition. Um, right now, there's an entry off of Ewing Street and also an entry off of Bun Drive. There's some, um, site photographs. Uh, this is looking, if you're approaching from Bun Drive, addition, proposed addition, we'll be back here where the green arrow is. There's a close-up. Um, this, this box structure right now is that, um, class, uh, the trash enclosure that we were mentioning. Um, here just kind of depicts of what the future addition would look like. Um, I just wanted to point out that, uh, I know there was a question on ballards and plantings. These are the existing ballards here that we would extend and kind of keep the same, uh, line. Um, these ornamental grasses, um, those will remain and will extend those around the building. Um, you can also see here that there's some existing pavement here. And with these improvements, we're actually going to be reducing the impervious coverage because we're going to remove this pavement here and extend uh, the planting beds. Here's just another little close-up kind of standing. Here's just another little close-up kind of standing next to the proposed addition. This green outline kind of outlines that. And here is a little outline of the pavement that would be removed and that would be, be additional, um, landscaping. And just a little close-up view, seeing those ornamental glasses and those bollards. Here is, uh, the existing site plan with the location of the proposed addition. Um, as mentioned before, it's a pretty small addition, um, three hundred and seventy-four square feet. There is existing two parking spaces here. Um, this is where we would propose the new trash enclosure. Um, the trash enclosure would be enclosed similar to what you see now. It'll match the siding in the building. So it'll really blend in. Um, it's now going to be tucked behind the building. So it's going to be less visible. All of, um, the addition. So here in the green is the extension of those perennial and ornamental grasses. Um, the location of the condenser unit will be on the side here tucked behind the building. Um, I know there was a question about roof leaders. Um, there's an existing roof leader right now that comes off here and a proposed leader that'll appear and we'll just pick up the storm line that comes off this leader um, and tie into that system. Here's a floor plan. This is the existing dentist practice. Um, you see here, we're just going to be adding an addition on to the, the back here. Um, I just note that the interior is going to be fitted out by a separate architect and this, this scheme that we have here is a little out of date. But there's going to be two new treatment rooms added to this addition. And then here's just some exterior elevations. Basically for the exterior, we're just going to really, um, copy the same architecture that's there. And so it blends into the building. It's going to be the vertical wood siding with sliding windows. Um, it's a clear story here. And then on the rear of the building, we'll have a gutter. And this is the leader I was mentioning before. Um, but really just matching all the finishes and the style of architecture that's there currently. Any, uh, questions?
Um, Chris, uh, oh, I'm getting an echo. Although not part of our submission package, um, when I sent out the notice, one of the neighbors reached out and asked us to address, um, two of the mounted lights on the back. Um, are, and, and I, can you indicate, um, where that is and what we're proposing to do, um, as based on his, uh, reaching out to us?
I, I can, I can tell you.
Oh, okay.
Uh, you see, you take, you go to the top of that, uh, right there, that, that's not lights. Those are cameras. Um, but around that corner
There's a light.
Uh, is a light that goes down on, on that area. Yes, there is.
And as you could see, it's unshielded. And, um, what are we proposing to do, Mr. Herring?
We are proposing to put a, uh, a LED that, that bumps out of the building and has adjustable, um, directional lights so that the, the, the extent of the light covers the parking edge, but doesn't go beyond.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And, um, the other, um, change that we were making based on comments that we received had to do with the, uh, bike parking. Can you just describe that real quickly?
So we, um, we would, would, would take Justin's recommendation and, uh, we'd add, we can add a bike rack per, per, um, per building.
Yeah, great. And that's all the questions I had for these witnesses. Mr. Chair.
Yes, board members, any questions? Of the two witnesses?
How large, uh, how many bikes would each rack accommodate?
Um, I think it's, I think it's five aside, so, so ten.
Okay, thank you.
I have a, a question about, um, can you go back to the image that had the three D and yellow of the, yeah, so, um, when I'm looking at the, the site plan, it looks like the, um, additional area, the corner, the outside corner of it is going right up to the parking lot and that a bollard couldn't even fit in there on the site plan when I'm looking at sheet, um, I'm looking at sheet SP one dot O two, yeah. Um, so are you actually able to fit in a bollard between that corner and the, the drive or how's that work?
Yeah. So i- in blue here, that, that's the location of, uh, the bollards. So there would be one right here at the corner and then wrapping the side.
We have a similar, we have a similar, we have a similar bollard situation right next to the corner of the, uh, of, if it's not this, this trash enclosure, the other trash enclosure.
Okay, but this would be an actual start. I, I would just think that that would be, um, that kind of that landscaped area would come out a little more generously around that corner. That was my only question there. Um, okay, I understand.
Any other questions of the witnesses? Okay.
Yes. Yeah, I'd like to call up Dr. Russo. Mr. Russo, you there? Yep.
Yes, I am. Thank you. People can hear me here. Uh, notes here. So really just to piggyback what, off of what, um, Jamie and, uh, Chris had, had talked about. You know, although the site plan, um, well, this, this really springs from a problem that is a good problem, but a problem nonetheless, and that the practice is growing. Um, and we have really shut off, uh, accepting new patients in order to maintain the standards that, that we've set for ourselves. Uh, I've been working with Jamie, you know, although it's his name on the application. Um, we've really been working together to find a solution, uh, for this problem. Um, and I really wanted to look into an option where I didn't have to move. Uh, if you look at that building, it's more than just a group of dentists. We really have everything set up as far as each type of specialty. There's a really nice patient flow. If something, let's say goes a bit differently than anybody wants and you need a root canal, we're walking the patient right over, um, instead of, hey, you know, calling and, and driving anywhere. It's a, it's a really nice, uh, community. So although the build-out has a staff lounge in there, it allows us to convert an existing staff lounge to a treatment area. So the net result of this would be two additional operatories. So treatment rooms and dentistry are called operatories. It would bring us from seven chairs up to nine chairs. I have a plan as far as staffing that. Um, we have a dentist who's looking to move to Princeton with his family this summer if we get the thumbs up. Um, and honestly, this three hundred feet creates three new jobs between the doctor, hygienist, admin assistant, and clinical assistant. Um, so pretty, uh, unique or efficient use of the space, I would say. Um, also, you know, as far as the patients that we are treating, they are coming from this community. You know, this is a Princeton-based family practice. It has been for twenty years. I'm hoping for at least twenty, twenty-five more and we'll see. Um, and, you know, we've, we've established relationships with existing businesses. Um, not to get into any sort of potential HIPAA violation, but they regularly send their new employees that we have had to, to say no to. So, uh, the net change in this is, is directly related to, um, patient care. Uh, what I'll leave you with is this is, this is my partner and myself. You know, we are not a, a corporation. As a lot of dental offices have partnered with private equity or venture capital groups. Um, you know, this is a, a really elegant solution to a problem that, that we're facing. That's really it.
Thank you, Dr. Russo.
Okay. Any question of this witness? Okay, please continue.
Okay, I'd like to, uh, bring up our planner, Paul Phillips. Paul, um, you've already been sworn in, but, um, if you can go through your qualifications.
Surely. So, uh, I'm a principal in the firm of Phillips Price. I've been practicing as a planner for over forty years in the state. I'm a licensed professional planner, member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, hold a master's degree in urban planning from Hunter College. Uh, I've appeared as an expert, uh, in probably over two hundred fifty municipalities in the state. I've appeared both before this board and the planning board. My firm represents probably thirty municipalities and boards, uh, in the state as well.
Will gladly accept you as an expert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So Paul, can you tell us a little bit about what you've done to, to take a look at this, uh, site and the proposal?
Yeah, I visited the site and surrounding area. I, uh, reviewed the application materials and the plans. I obviously conferred with the applicant's development team. Uh, I reviewed the Princeton zoning ordinance and master plan, including the recently adopted master plan. And I did have occasion to review the reports of the board professionals as well.
Great. And, and what kind of opinion have you reached in terms of the, the requests today?
So the, uh, as, as the board has heard, the applicant is seeking, uh, what I characterize as a minimal expansion of building B uh, within the office complex, and that's being done to accommodate, uh, an existing tenant who, as you just heard, would like to stay at the subject, subject location. Uh, the floorier expansion is, uh, again, it's about three hundred seventy-four square feet, however, and others went through the zoning, uh, history. Uh, the, uh, existing FAR is sixteen point six percent. What's required for an office park in this zone is ten percent. The existing condition is already over and the increase would actually only go from sixteen point six percent to sixteen point six nine percent. Uh, so notwithstanding what I characterize as a de minimis increase, the applicant, uh, still needs a D four FAR variance from this board. Uh, and with that said, uh, I'm sure the board is aware, it's heard other, uh, D four variances, what the proof requirements are. Uh, they, uh, essentially are less burdensome, much less burdensome than a D one variance. And the proof requirements emanate from a case known as Randolph Town, Town Center. It's an appellate, uh, this division decision that dates back, I think, to nineteen ninety-nine. With the court said in that matter, and this was also summarized by your professionals, is that, uh, an applicant need not show that a site is particularly suited for more intense development. Rather, it must show that the site can accommodate a larger floor area than permitted, uh, by zoning. So in other words, uh, any increase in FAR uh, must not result in any problems or detriment in terms of how the site functions, as well as that there be no significant impacts on, on any of the adjacent, uh, properties. Uh, as you heard, with regard to this particular application, I think the special reasons relating uh, to the applicant's request are the desire to accommodate a longstanding tenant whose current space is at the end or rear of building B. Uh, there's a need to expand. There are really no other alternatives or availability on site. And the only other viable option, as you heard, would be to basically move out of the complex, relocate elsewhere and potentially relocate outside of, of Princeton. And I mention that because I've looked at prior master plans as well as the recent, uh, recently adopted master plan, uh, from probably less than two weeks ago. And it's been clear through that documentation that the long-term stability of the non-residential zones in the municipality. And this zone, this OR one zone on, uh, OR two zone on Bun Drive in particular is, uh, is cited. So I think the bottom line is, is that what amounts to this de minimis increase, I think, should be weighed by this board, uh, in that context. In terms of the, the, the proof requirements under route Randolph Town Center, uh, in my opinion, I think this, the site can accommodate the expansion. Uh, first of all, uh, notwithstanding the FAR increase, the applicant otherwise can meet all the other OR two district standards. Uh, the buildings, including the expanded building B, are all well within the setback requirements for the district. Uh, as you heard, the existing access aisle, the employee parking on the opposite side of the access aisle, where the expansion is taking place can all be preserved and accommodated. The addition itself, if you, uh, remember the plans, it does not extend beyond actually the building extension on the opposite side of the entrance door. So visually it's not obtrusive. And as you also heard, the applicant is actually slightly reducing the impervious coverage and adding, uh, slightly more, uh, green space. And then, um, in terms of adjacent uses, the property in this location is directly opposite. Another medical office facility, that building is well set back from the common property line. Uh, and there's intervening mature trees that do provide screening. So I see no visual or really any other impact on any of the, uh, adjacent, uh, properties, uh, given this expansion. Uh, and I just conclude with two other points. Uh, one, for purposes of record and advancement of purposes of zoning. I think this, uh, the granting of this variance would, would, uh, advanced purpose G of the municipal land use statute, which is to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of commercial uses. And secondly, again, I mentioned I reviewed the recently adopted master plan. And there's some number of policy objectives, uh, directives that are sort of on point. Uh, under economic development goals, there's a, a recommendation about making sure that the trend of businesses and jobs moving out of the municipality can be reversed. And actually in the land use recommendation section regarding this zone on Bun Drive, there's actually a reference to this area possibly being considered for a higher a density with the current zoning would allow. So for all those reasons, and in summary, I think there's a legitimate basis for this board uh, to grant the D four, uh, variance for this particular application. And Chris, that I think sums it up. Happy to entertain questions.
Thank you.
Board members, any questions of the planner? Yes, Donna.
I'm not sure if this question is for Mr. Phillips or Mr. Rudman. Um, the ex, the proposed expansion backs onto that employee parking area, which is kind of tight. Um, does it intrude at all into the existing kind of roadway back there where, you know, cars can go either way?
Uh, I'll speak and then Chris can speak. And based on my re- review of the plans, the, that access aisle would basically be preserved. Uh, the, the extension of the building would not encroach on that access aisle and Chris can comment as well.
Yeah, no, I'll echo that. It, it doesn't encroach in that access aisle.
Does it do anything as far as, you know, drivers being able to see where they're going or?
I, I don't think so because currently there's already a, a structure there, um, that, that, the previous dumpster enclosure. So I don't think it really changes any.
This, this will be higher than the dumpster enclosure.
Yeah, but it's higher, the, 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 the fence is higher than a person.
Yeah, a- at a car level, you would still visually see this, the same structure.
Okay. Thanks.
If we approve this, would it be the first such expansion in that complex?
Yes.
Has anyone? Is it the first one that's ever, as far as you know, that's ever been requested?
I don't know. I, I've owned it since sixteen. It's, it was built in eighty-four.
Is the parking lot ever full?
No.
Thank you.
And I, I'll, I'll add that, um, you know, we're required to have where the ordinance, two hundred and thirty-six spots. And right now, uh, Jamie has three hundred provided and, um, sorry, God.
Uh, Chairman? Mr. Col. Uh, regarding the parking, um, the analysis was for fifty thousand square feet were going to be evaluated at the parking standard for a lab use, which is one space for every five hundred square feet, whereas the office square feet, whereas the office use is one space for every two hundred square feet. So the fact that it's being considered as an office building, the parking requirement per the ordinance does increase. The the findings of fact from nineteen eighty, when this was approved, they did a conditional use to defer the construction of eighty-three parking spaces. At that point, they said three hundred and eighty-three were required. The applicant, or three hundred and eighty-four, the applicant had said, no, we only need three hundred. So the there's a conditional use authorization where you can set aside a piece of land for future uses. So in a sense, this new space creates a two-space parking deviation from the agreement of the planning board back in nineteen eighty. So we need to, the applicant needs to address that.
I mean, I'll just weigh in from a planning standpoint with regard to parking, and I'll I'll just kind of relate my own experience on both the municipal and private side. And and understanding that this has medical tenants, which historically have had a higher standard than other office tenants. But what I've seen over the years, both pre and post COVID, is office complexes are way overparked. And even the medical office parking is not what it had been historically. And what I'm finding is that municipalities are actually reducing the medical parking standard as well as the general office parking standard. Because the demand just isn't there. And if you take any of the space that's sort of not medical in particular, because of, you know, work at home and not everybody's going in, the the demand is even less than it was, you know, five, five years ago. And you'll see, if you go to office complexes, even medical office complexes, the park, it's just totally overparked in terms of the amount of parking spaces that just aren't used. And I will say, I did not do an exhaustive parking study here, Derek, but when I was there in the late morning, there were plenty of spaces, and I assume it was a typical day, but there were plenty of spaces. And I know Jamie can obviously comment on that as well, because he kind of, you know, understands it and has, you know, been out there far more than me. He may want to comment, but I'd like to just share that, that I think the loss of the two spaces and notwithstanding the history of what was required back in nineteen eighty at a different time and a different fact pattern, I think there should be more than sufficient parking to accommodate this expansion and the loss of the two spaces.
I I mean, I'd be glad to comment. The the, you know, any, anyone who is in Princeton, will, you know, who walk, who who knows this project, will see that that the front two rows are almost always vacant, or maybe there's a car or two that parks there for for picnic or or shade. But but there are easily, easily a quarter of that front parking lot is not used. And and, you know, there has never been one comment in my eight years from a tenant or a client of that they were trouble finding parking spaces.
Thank you.
Mr. DeGrazia? Yes, so that completes our direct presentation. We have all of our witnesses here that could certainly available to to ask, to answer any type of questions. And I guess there's also the opening up to the public.
Right. Okay, so we, if you don't have anything else to say, we will open it up to the public. Okay. So this is the public portion of the hearing. If anybody would like to speak to this application, please indicate that by pressing the raise hands button at the bottom of the screen. Claudia, has anybody indicated they'd like to speak? Claudia?
No, no head, sir.
Okay. All right, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. And before we go into executive section, Mr. DeGrazia, if you want to say anything?
No, I I think our planner pretty much summarized our position. This has been, the Princeton Professional Park has been an important part of the community for decades. I think the need for these type of services is really critical. I I know just down the street, you're going to be getting in additional density and dentists, health professionals are just going to be in demand. And to be able to keep the dentist practice that's there for a couple of decades there, and to continue with this slight and de minimis expansion that's within previously, you know, developed areas is, I I think, a great idea. And like we said, in terms of function, and I've been to this site, my family's been to this site, in terms of parking, utility, infrastructure, it could easily accommodate this small three hundred and seventy-four square foot increase. So thank you. We appreciate your time.
You're welcome. Okay, board members, let's discuss this, or if someone would like to make a motion, please do.
I move we approve this.
Steven, do you want to include in your motion that the applicant will comply with the staff's recommendations on site plan aspects? I think they're right. I don't I don't think the applicant has objected to these.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Bicycle, lighting.
Yeah, and I wanted.
Bike rack and lighting.
Yeah, there there, I think it's, yeah, it's paragraph four of Derek and Dan Weissman's memo. So there are various recommendations there. And Justin Lesko also had a recommendation with respect to the bicycle racks.
And and if I could add real quick, I I think the condition could be that the applicant works with staff to find the locations for those.
For the trash enclosure? Or the bike rack?
The bike racks, yeah, rather than determining them at this time.
Okay.
All right, I also, could I add a comment about the the circulation?
Sure.
That corner condition that we're looking at, it it just looks to me like in in terms of the 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 functioning of the site and the circulation, the way that that corner is coming out without any buffer around it, except the bollards sticking into the, you know, kind of blocking it from the drive, it's it's very tight. And I'm imagining someone could be backing out of those those spots and and it's, it 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 seems like maybe just bringing out that landscaped area, even if it cuts down on the the drive a bit, there's there's plenty of drive that that might be helpful, but perhaps that's something you can look at with the municipal staff when you're looking at the site plan. It 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 just looks uncomfortably tight.
I would, I would think that makes sense. Let the staff look at it and make a determination that drive aisle, which needs to be.
Yeah, I'll I'll, Stephen had a second on the motion to approve. But I've been to the, my periodontist is in there and I had an implant done, so I've been in that building B many more times than I wish I had to, and I've never had a problem parking there. There's a, it's almost too much parking in a way. Certainly different than Princeton Medical Group down the way, which is, the parking lot is almost jammed all the time. So there's absolutely no problem with parking in it. And for the unfortunate need to go in there for an implant, and it is very, they are very nice buildings, and I do like going in there. And I think that the size of this expansion is very, very modest, and I think would have, you know, no detriment and only a benefit.
I would agree with you on that.
Chairman?
So we have a motion in a second? Any just, any more discussion on?
Just a question.
Derek, I think Derek wanted to make a comment.
Where do we end up on the trash? Was that the missing dumpster? Did we, what was the response to that?
Jamie, would you like to just reinstate, restate it again?
We'll put it in the area of the two, two parking spaces as indicated in the plan, which Chris Rudman had shown. It it would be roughly about fif- fifteen, twenty by twenty in that, in that area.
Could he bring that up again, just so we're all on the same page, please? Thank you. That's great. And then the the other thing is the parking, as I too am a patient of one or two doctors at this facility, and it's a technical variance. Can we? Can the variance be absorbed into this, Karen, with a notice or?
I'm I'm sorry, Derek, could you repeat the beginning of your question?
So the the parking analysis that was done, there was approximately fifty thousand of the building that was to be lab use. So if you run the numbers as all office use, the addition requires a two-space variance. Before, when it was initially approved, they had a three hundred and eighty-four space requirement. They agreed to a conditional use where they would determine whether they needed parking within the next five years. They didn't. I mean, I agree with everyone's comments that parking is not a problem here, but since the numbers changed and it's a technical variance, can that be absorbed?
Yes.
Thank you.
But that, but that, we'll just make that part of the motion, though, so.
Good.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, if I could follow up on the trash as well, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
So would the dumpsters that are temporarily in parking spaces be removed? You know, to be put in this new space? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, dumpster, Justin, just one. There's only one dumpster.
Okay.
In that area. So it was only one in front of B. It's over by A. It will be, it will be in this new location. But just one dumpster.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Further discussion? Okay. All right, so we have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, Claudia, can you call it off?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floy?
Yes.
Mr. Shriver?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Our last and final hearing this evening is case number Z twenty-three dash four eighteen, two ten Linden Lane, block seventy-three oh two, lot eighteen in the R eight zone. Karen, is all the noticing in order?
Yes, the noticing is in order. The board has jurisdiction tonight.
Thank you. Derek, can you give us your memo on that?
Yes, sir.
Can can you turn up your volume? It's kind of hard to hear you. All of a sudden, you just started cutting out.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Did you hear me any better now?
A little bit, yeah.
Thank you, Chairman.
You're welcome.
Two ten LLC is the owner of two ten Linden Lane. Yishwan Lee is the applicant, seeking a C one and C two variance to permit the construction of a new home on a lot, and an exception to the required lot area. Bulk variances for side and rear yard setbacks are requested to construct a detached garage and driveway setbacks. Properties in the R eight zone of the former Princeton Township, the existing single-family use is permitted as of right. The lot's non-compliant with respect to the required lot area. The requirement's eighty-five hundred square feet, the existing six thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. And the the existing or the pre, the subject house there, property is not complying with regard to the right side yard setback, the requirement is eight, the existing's five point three. And then it's not compliant with a twenty-foot combined side yard setback, the existing's ten point eight. In the past, this property was issued a variance and conditional use authorization in nineteen ninety to permit a one-room addition to be used for piano lessons, and an exception to the required smaller side yard setbacks. And the applicant's proposing to demolish the existing single-family home and construct a new approximately twenty-four hundred square foot home with a single home or the detached two-car garage. The proposed home features a full finished basement with a bedroom and full bath, a dining room, guest room, living room, full bath. Kitchens are proposed on the first floor and the second floor. Contains three bedrooms and two full baths. The attic's finished, and it has a bedroom and a full bath. Lot area is non-compliant, as I mentioned earlier. A detached carport is proposed behind the house, the carport and driveway encroaching to the required setbacks. The following variances are required: lot area, requirement eighty-five hundred square feet, existing six thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. Side yard setback for the carport requirement is five feet, proposed is one foot. Parking setback requirement is five feet, proposed is one point five feet, and then the driveway setback is also fi- three feet, excuse me. And the proposed setback is one point five feet. The applicant should approach, advise if they have approached any adjoining lands to determine if there's any land to cure the deficiency to be sold to the applicant or conversely purchased a lot. They've sought consideration under both the C one and C two criteria. That's my memo. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Just one question.
Yes, sir.
The proposed, it's a carport, not a garage.
Excuse me, I did mention car, garage earlier. It is a carport.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Michael, you're muted.
Yeah. Muted. I had a question on, on the required side yard setback. Five feet, I guess I was expecting to see three, but one, one neighborhood character or something, it, did that not apply to this area?
For the garage, the carport or the parking, the driveway?
I guess, I guess it's carport.
All right, hold on. The carport's an accessory structure that's subject to a five-foot setback regardless of lot area, but the the driveway setback is predicated on the lot width. And if the lot if the lot and lots greater than fifty feet in width, the minimum setbacks, five feet. So for lots, for side lot lines on fifty feet, lots or less, the parking setback should be three feet or the driveway. I mean, the driveway should be three feet, so hopefully.
Okay.
Yep, the parking's still five.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions before we begin the presentation? All right, who will be presenting this? Is it Mr. Song?
Yes, yes, Chairman. I do want to make a request, because I do believe that one of the the applicants, Etron Lee, he's in the attendees, and I'd like to bring him over to the panel.
I think he is over at the panel now. I see Mr. Lee. There he is.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, great. And as, just as Mr. Bridger has noted, he aptly summarized in terms of the the reason of the application is to seek a bulk variance, and particularly with respect to the side and to the rear setbacks. One of the affirmative actions that we attempted to cure this hardship is that we sent a letter back in November twenty-eighth to the Board of Education, which was the adjoining property owner, and inquired whether or not they would be interested if they were to sell a portion of their lot over to to the applicant's property. To date, we have received no response. So we assume that they are not interested in that proposal. With respect to the two witnesses.
Mr. Song, do you have a copy of that letter and can you submit? Mr. Song, do, do you have a copy of that letter and can you submit that to the board?
Oh, yes, of course. Yes, I will certainly do that.
Okay, and you said that letter was dated November?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eight, okay.
And I believe the uh, the property is the middle school.
Okay.
And in addition to the documents that we have submitted, uh, we'll be presenting two witnesses. Uh, first is our architect, Anthony Laplaca. And then the uh, uh, the representative of two ten Linden LLC, Yichuan Lee. Uh, so I'd like to first uh, have Mr. Laplaca. Uh, come and discuss his, very briefly his qualifications, so that he can be accepted as an expert witness, uh, Anthony, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Laplaca, will swear you in?
Uh.
You swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Laplaca, can you uh, please discuss uh? What this property is about and the uh, the proposal of the applicant?
Mr. Song, did you first wanna qualify Mr. Laplaca? I, I assume he's licensed.
I'm sorry. Can you uh, please uh, share with the board your qualifications?
Sure, um, I hold a uh, Master of Architecture degree from Tulane University. And I am a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
And your license is current?
Yes, it is.
Have you testified before this?
Yes, I have.
Yeah, we'll, we'll accept you as an expert.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Laplaca, as um, as I know, started uh prematurely, would you please uh, describe this property and what the applicant's proposal uh, concerns?
So, yeah, so uh, the applicant is proposing a uh, a new house to be constructed on, on this la- lot. Um, the uh, lots on Linden Lane um are um, are um. Immediately around this uh, this lot. Um. Up the same size, uh, fifty by one hundred and twenty, which is, as we've noted is, is a smaller than the uh. The lot, uh, uh, the required lot size, so they are um, relatively small lots and. And present some difficulty to uh, to uh, place a, a house. Um, but uh, what we, what I've designed is a house that is compact, uh, and uh. Is able to be situated on the lot uh, with the, the house itself uh, within the setbacks. Um, and um. Uh, what we've, we've tried to do is locate the carport um. In the rear of the property, uh, in order to follow what, what I believe is the planning objective. Of uh, of the town, to uh, move the cars. Um, away from being parked uh, in, in the front of the house or, or near the front. Uh, so uh, requires a drive that uh, that traverses the, the uh, lot and, and, and goes to the rear. And uh. The difficulty is that it's a, it's a smaller lot. Um, and um, and we aren't able to uh, to have the uh, kind of side yard setback. Uh, this type of setback that we're proposing is one that is um. Taking place in, in several other houses in the neighborhood and they are confronted with the same sort of situation, so. Um, what we're proposing is, is, you know, attempting to get those cars uh, parked in the, in the back of the, of the yard. Um, and uh, and we're faced with the same sort of uh, uh, difficulty uh, with the, with the smaller lot size in order to accomplish that.
And Mr. Laplaca, can you also speak to as to how the design of this new construction uh, relates to the character of the neighborhood?
Well, I think that uh, that, you know, this is uh, the, the design of the house is, is designed in a uh. Is it of, of a, you know, a residential vernacular that uh. Uh, is uh, very compatible with the neighborhood, it has a, a front porch and uh, and gable roofs that, that. That face the uh, the front, so that it, you know, it uh, it has a, a, a sense of uh, community and neighborhood in that. In that sense, um, you know, it tries to uh, present uh, opportunities, I, I've uh. I've uh, made the gable roof, so the significant part of the roof is, is south-facing, so there's opportunity for. Uh, solar panels to be put on the roof, uh, the carport itself has uh, is a slope towards the south. It's uh, as well, so you know, the house is, is uh, makes attempts. Uh, in that way to, to uh, to be, you know, environmentally sensitive, we've also tried to. Uh, limit the amount of impervious coverage to uh, as, as small as possible, uh. We've included it's uh, something, uh, one thing that's a ribbon driveway that uh, allows for. Uh, a significant port, uh, portion of the uh, of the driveway itself. That is uh, that is not impervious coverage, it has turf uh, and then, and then uh, concrete uh, tracks for. Uh, for the driveway, so that, yeah, um, so we're trying to make an effort to uh, to be. Uh, environmentally sensitive in the, in the way we've uh, um, you know, uh, proceeded with uh, how we're going to. You know, uh, develop the property.
And this, as this is a new construction of a new home, um, is it fair to say that this will certainly. Have a positive impact to the surrounding community?
Well, I think so, uh, because I think it's a house that uh, you know, we are very close to all the schools and it's a house that uh. Is very compatible with uh, with a, a family residence, uh, and I think it will be very desirable. Uh, for a, a family to uh, to uh, you know, take up residence here and. And uh, and I think as a, as a residential neighborhood and within a, within the zone of the, of the school system, you'll. Have uh, the opportunities for people to be uh, going to school, uh, being pedestrians or riding their bikes and things like that. And not having to get involved with uh, you know, uh, being dri- uh, cars uh, taking them to school and things like that. So I think it, as, it, it really is the uh, the, the appropriate use. Uh, for this type of property within the context that exists.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Laplaca, um, I leave it to any questions that the board may have to him?
Mr. Song, just a technical question for me, I believe you did present some exhibits. Uh, to the board secretary, I don't know particular, I think you have one called Presentation Deck, is that something that Mr. Laplaca is gonna speak to? Or uh, Mr. Lee?
Uh, I believe, uh, Ms. Tony, is that something that you can speak to, because I know. For some reason, my laptop.
I do not have access to uh, present the, the uh.
Um, let's see, Claudia, can you call that up on the, can you s- share that? I think it's called Presentation Deck. And I don't know if there's other exhibits you want the board to see, but my sense was that seemed to be the uh.
Actually, really, I can present it, um, but I believe we all submit all the copies to all the board members, so.
Uh, no, I don't think so, I think you did it electronically, so.
We have to make a presentation, Yichuan, so um, if you can share.
Okay, sure, let me show. Yep, uh, it's always way up.
Actually, I don't remember now if we swore you in, but I'll swear you in now. Um, do you swear? Do you swear or affirm your testimony in this matter will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Alright, let me share my screen right now. Alright.
We'll call this Exhibit A one.
Uh, now you should be able to see this screen, right?
Yep.
Okay, good, um, but I believe uh, Mr. Laplaca had already go through these slides. So, Tony, do you want to go through again?
Well, I think uh, it probably the one that we want to, to, uh, now we're on the, the slide that, that shows that uh. Uh, Linden Lane as uh, as a street and uh, and we'll see that all the, the houses along. Uh, this side of the street for, for the immediate area, except for the exception of just a couple. Have uh, have the same sort of undersized lot that is fifty by one twenty-five. Uh, there have been many houses, well, uh, several houses, uh, uh, new houses built uh, within the neighborhood. Uh, that uh, that um, you know, uh, have built garages in the back. Uh, and uh, and I believe have had to get variances in order to accomplish. Uh, what has been sort of a planning objective, and I, I think it's a good idea to uh, to have this sort of uh. Uh, configuration where, you know, a house uh, presents itself to the street with a front porch or the front door. And uh, and then moves the uh, the car parking to the rear. Um, and uh, and, and, and keeps the uh, the streetscape uh, free of the uh. Of, of all the vehicles, so you know, it's, it's something that is, is uh. Has happened throughout the neighborhood and, and the new developments and uh, and I think that's, our intention is to continue. With that uh, that sort of uh, um, idea, and I think it served the neighborhood well. And these are uh, just elevations of the house, um, you know, it's designed in a, in a bit of a contemporary. Uh, fashion, but still uh, with uh, utilizing uh, motifs of vernacular. Uh, residential architecture, um, it has, you know, some areas with larger windows and. And more contemporary configurations, but still it has a front porch and uh, and uh, gable roofs and uh, and siding, so. You know, I believe that uh, it uh, it fits in uh, well with the, with the neighborhood. And so these are the, the site plans of what existed before, which was a house that uh. That did not conform to the setbacks, had uh, parking within the uh, within the front uh. Yard setback, um, so you know, the, the, many of the houses were built uh, uh, in this style. With uh, undersized setbacks, uh, parking that uh, that was in the front yard. And I think what we're proposing is to, is to address that sort, those sort of deficiencies. With the, with a newer house that is uh, you know, uh, trying to follow the planning objectives of, of moving the parking to the back. And uh, and, and we're recognizing the building setbacks. Uh, as some, uh, something as well that gives us more space between the uh, the houses than the uh, the previous houses that existed there.
Yeah, and then, that's it. Eugene, I think you're muted.
Oh, well, I can uh, I don't think I am, can you hear me?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, just uh, thanking Mr. Laplaca for his presentation and just asking Mr. Lee if he would like to. Uh, add anything further uh, to the presentation?
Uh, no, not really, uh, but I just wanted to thank you to the board for hearing my case tonight, I know it's late, it's ten fifteen now. Uh, but definitely appreciate your efforts and uh, and I'm just been here just for any question you may have for me. Thank you.
I have two questions. Is, what's the square footage of the house, is it roughly? Three thousand square feet?
Well. I think, I think it's uh, more like twenty-four hundred square feet.
And it's five bedrooms? It's a possibility of a sixth?
There uh, there is a bedroom uh, within the uh, finished uh, basement area. And there also is a bedroom in uh, a portion of the uh, finished attic. So that uh, takes the house, you know, the first two floors have uh, three, there are three bedrooms on the second floor. There's a, a, a bedroom in a portion of the finished attic, uh, and a bedroom in the uh, in the finished basement.
And a study in the basement that could be a bedroom if you wanted.
Well, uh. Not, not legitimately, because the, there, there, the bedroom that we are providing in the basement has uh. Has the uh, uh, the egress window that is required for uh, for a bedroom, for a room to be occupied. Legally is a, is a sleeping area.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
I have a question. If I may, um. You mentioned, you say there's, there's other houses, you know, new houses. That you believe got similar variances? I assume you mean side yard and can you actually cite? Any of them and the variances?
Well, I, uh, un- unfortunately, I do not have citations for them, but uh. Um.
Okay.
I, um, maybe Derek might know, um, no actual citations for them, but uh, you know, um. They do exist, I, I do believe, um. They're houses of similar configurations with garages that are close or on the uh, on the uh, property lines that uh. That are in the rear, so they're, 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 they, they have happened in the neighborhood. Um, and unfortunately, I don't have a specific citation for that.
Um, another question. You know, this being a small lot and really it's uh, the smallness is created by the depth. Um. Because it's a complying lot. Width-wise. And. I guess. If it's complying width-wise. Why is there a need for a side yard setback?
Well, I think there was a desire to make the house uh, compact so that it wouldn't, it wouldn't completely cover the uh, the lot. And uh, and in order to, uh, so that there would be a rear yard. Uh, we are trying to design a house that a family would wanna live in and uh, and, you know, a yard space is a desirable thing to have as a component. Uh, for a family house, uh, and another uh, element of a house that isn't, or a lot that's not particularly deep. Um. To put a garage area in the rear also takes up yard space, so it is a bit of a push and pull. Uh, and uh, and there's a balance that uh, that uh, takes place and, and sometimes um. Uh, we have a situation where we feel like uh, uh, in order to get the uh, the type of house that uh. That would be a desirable house for people to have a yard and, and uh, and a, and a good configuration for, for their, for their house that. Uh, that we, we come up with the, with the, the need for the variance on the side yard.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, can I ask a question about the um. Where you're measuring the setback to, I'm assuming it's to the outside of the six by six. Posts of the carport?
That's correct.
Um, and so uh, then Derek is. Is there any issue with the um? It looks like the piers are maybe like thirty-inch diameter, if those, those would pretty much go right up to the property line then. So is.
The, 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 the piers um, are within the uh, within the footprint that is. If uh, of the uh, of the, of the uh, roof that's presented in the uh, in the, in the site plan. They're not on the outside of the, of the roof, they're within the inside, so, so.
Okay, so the one I'm looking at the carport elevation on A five. The piers don't go beyond the eighteen-foot out to out of the posts, is that what you're saying?
Yes. So in, with, between uh, the area, the uh, the, the dimension between the post is actually less than eighteen feet. So it's eighteen feet to the outside of the post.
Right. But from the carport elevation on sheet A five, the piers. Project beyond the eighteen. Feet.
I think that's a, the way he's uh, illustrating the height, am I, is that the way?
Am I, is that the way you're doing it, Anthony, on the? Cause I thought it was the the roof was flush with the edge of the structure.
Yes, that's correct.
Was taken from.
They do not project beyond the the edge of the roof.
But you're right, Bernice. If it if the roof did project beyond the structure, the setback will be taken from the the roof.
Okay, well, I guess I I'm asking a different question. It's that um the the piers below grade. Those are gonna go right up to the property line and is that um, okay, does is with that is that considered zero setback then? Because the piers in the elevation are obviously projecting beyond those
Well, the p- the below grade piers are um they they do go beyond the the area of the roof and I don't believe that that um I do believe that below grade, that is not uh typically an issue for uh uh setback requirement.
Yeah, that was my question to Derek.
That would be something that Derek would have to answer, but I in my experience, uh below grade is not uh as long as you're in your property, that's not an issue.
So you're correct. Just so we're clear, though, it looks like it's a it's a slightly angled roof and the support piers go straight down into the ground. The roof doesn't overhang. Obviously, if you have a footer around the the six by six, that will expand towards a property line, but it it wouldn't be. I would just take the setback from the actual structure itself, whatever's closest to the property line. And I did look back, um there were a couple variances granted um for garages in the rear yard, uh one sixty-six Linden was four feet. Um and these were back when we didn't have the five foot setback. Uh one seventy-eight Linden was five feet and one ninety-four Linden was three feet for uh granting the setback variance. For the those were garages.
They will be full of the five foot requirement.
Right.
Okay.
Which was changed as part of the accessory dwelling units uh revisions.
Board members, any other questions? You're muted, Michael.
And they were five, that variance, five feet, five feet and three.
Yeah, one sixty-six linen um requirement was eight feet at the time and they got a four foot setback variance. Um one seventy-eight was uh again, eight feet and they got a five foot setback and one ninety-four got a three foot setback.
Uh you you done, Michael?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I had I had the same concern that Michael did about the uh this is new construction, so I just wonder why we can't meet the side yard, you know, we can't meet the side yard setbacks. And I also question the proximity of the carport to the sideline. Um, I think it's, I think it's too tight. And I just don't, I I don't feel that the making the house longer and narrower would create a problem. That was it. Any any other comments, board members, discussion? Okay, do we have any questions of George?
Yeah, picking up on your comment, uh well, Steve. If you complied with the side yard setbacks, how much of a yard would be left if you maintain the same off-floor area? In other words, if you squeezed it and squeezed it out narrow?
Well, I mean, I I really that that's a uh that that it's not something that I could uh, you know, figure out on the spot. I mean, that would uh require uh you know, a redesign. Uh what what I would say is that uh that the neighborhood is uh filled with houses that don't comply with their the yard, the side yard uh setbacks and uh and I think that, you know, this uh house uh does a lot of things uh beneficial things. I mean, I think it uh it tries to utilize it, uh you know, a a a compact area that uh that you know, doesn't uh doesn't create a uh very much impervious coverage. Um and um and I I think that it it really is not a uh to have a driveway that goes that goes uh through the side yard and uh and um into the backyard. Uh to me, that doesn't seem to be any different that than is uh is happening on many of the existing houses.
But a lot of those are are existing from many, many years ago.
That's true.
So the newer houses we've looked at have all conflagged with the bulk standards. You know, they fit within the buildable footprint.
Well, I think the the house itself does fit within the buildable footprint. And you're right that this is uh this side yard uh is tighter than uh uh not or the driveway is tighter to the side yard than than maybe some of the other uh but I don't think that uh it's appreciably different uh um to have a driveway that's uh one foot six from the from the side yard uh is is uh rather than three uh is doesn't seem to be uh appreciably different, especially if it's a drive that's driving through to the back. Um I I it and you know, I I I do appreciate Derek's uh comment that uh that you know, I but uh I I thought I did by from looking in the neighborhood that it seems to be that there are many buildings that are on or very close to the uh accessory buildings that are on or very close to um the uh the uh um the lot lines. Um and uh I I don't, you know, I'm sure Derek knows specifics, but um and uh I guess I should have been a little more prepared to uh show uh some of those, but uh it is a neighborhood that's uh filled with with um um accessory buildings that uh that that do uh that are built on or very close to uh to the to the to the lot lines.
Existing existing houses, not new, not new houses or accessory structures.
Well, um some of the, well, uh I mean uh Derek did cite the ones that did get variances and and uh and they are uh and this this is a little closer than than some of those variances that were allowed. But variances nonetheless were allowed from uh from those side yards and uh that is true, yes. But uh
It's significantly closer, not a little.
I thought I heard that
It's not like two two feet to one and a half feet.
Yeah, the the I think the closest one is three feet setback, right? So we have probably about one and one feet and four inch, so.
Well, it's one six uh for the driveway setback and uh one foot for the carport. Yeah, I guess the carport could be moved somewhat and I guess the reason why I placed it there was that uh for ease of movement in and out. Uh but I I think that, you know, the carport has the potential to be shifted uh so that uh so that it could be uh, you know, more in conforming with some of the variances that uh that have already been granted.
No.
I I don't wanna speak. Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask it on the application. It says that the proposed front yard is twenty-two feet. The requirement is twenty-seven, the existing was twenty-six and a half. And the proposed is twenty-two. So you've moved it four feet up.
Well, well, actually, the uh the um the ordinance does allow for the front porch to uh to um to uh intrude into the front yard setback and that we've uh we've included a uh a front porch as a component that uh we think is a nice uh a nice uh component in in a neighborhood situation. Uh and the ordinance uh encourages such uh types of uh of elements within uh within this neighborhood uh and then allows them to uh to intrude within the front yard setback. So so that is actually conforming within the uh the ordinance.
I see, and I'm comfortable with that. I'm more concerned about the uh the side yards and the and the carport placement itself.
Well, yeah, I said, you know, I think that uh that there there, you know, definitely some flexibility. There was, you know, uh moving, of course, straight in and out is uh is maybe a more desirable thing, but a but a a slight shift to uh to something that is uh maybe conforming to some of the the uh setback variances that uh that you allowed previously is something that uh that I think uh uh could easily be accomplished. Uh so that the carport could could also uh be within those sorts of uh uh in that sort of uh uh precedent that 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 has been set already.
Yeah, I I concur that. So that's what I direct. Tony, when he designed this uh property, he and I were actually trying to maximize the compliance to the code. Um so that's why we are actually did not push the carport all the way to the backs uh allowed setback, which is five five feet. We actually leave it plainly uh the rear setback for the carport because we respect that uh we're trying to uh contribute to this stability. They were Princeton trying to advocate, even with our master plan approval. Uh so um with that said, the carport can be repositioned to compromise uh that will actually to fulfill the requirement of the five feet size setback. And that's not an issue for me. Um, uh, I just really want to uh ask the board to consider the site setback for the driveway because as as we all agree this although it's combined with fifty feet of a width, but in fact, it's a very narrow, narrow site. I mean, if you if all you you going to the London main every day, you will see all that traffic, all that um the cha- charge cane has been put on the side. Uh I would imagine that you would agree with me that that whole area need to be plain reason because the traffic uh with uh London is very, very narrow, very, very tight. Um so therefore, that site on the side setback, if we enforce that, then there will actually uh force all that property become very small piece or very, very extended to uh to front and the back. And that will even push further that street to be even further narrow. Um and and just consider the site. The driveway itself, right? The driveway itself, it's not a structure, it's all uh um empty space and I we respect that, right? So that's why we keep our driveway to very, very minimum. Uh I believe Tony is about ten feet, right? Ten or nine feet, why only for the driveway? Just because we want to give enough as much side setback as possible. Uh so just consider uh the true hardship situation that we have here. Uh and also consider that uh those uh change in property has been approved of variance. I mean, the coast one is third point now is three feet. As a side setback and ours is a one point six. Uh so it's one and one point four feet of the difference. Uh it could be, it could be seen as a significant, it could be seen as a more and less uh in the border line, right? So I just really consider you can consider my hardship here. Um and also, uh as a as a bonus to this new construction, um I as owner, uh I actually uh advocate all the green building uh 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 structure trying to uh fulfill and our township's uh uh sub stability. So we I actually told uh Tony about, I like to spend more on the insul- insulation. I want to get more uh on the green that such as heat pump, uh HVAC going through the all the solar panel ratings to put for the carport roof. So in a short um in in a nutshell, I just want you to consider this um with all the benefit, with all the the things that the the more expensive, more cost that I spent on this new infrastructure. Uh just as a as a appreciation, if we could consider, give me that one point six setback for driveway and also being the carport, I can push further to to inward the the yard area. Uh so definitely appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Board members, any other questions? Of the applicant? Or the experts? All right.
Um I just, oh, I'm sorry. I just have one more comment to make. Um I did have the letter that I did send to the board of ed. Um I have it on my laptop here, but I'm having a hard time attempting to share it on the screen. I don't know if to add still.
Well, Mr. Song, your representation is that um you you did send this correspondence to the Board of Education.
Uh, correct.
That you will provide it to the board secretary, correct?
Yes, I will.
All right. And and my understanding is that the other two lots uh the other two adjacent lots are themselves noncompliant, correct, with lot area? So the Board of Ed was the only property that had, I mean, it's it's the acreage is such that uh although it's probably unlikely the Board of Ed would convey land to you, but but they have acreage, correct?
Correct. And and I think it's in one of the slides where you do have the, I believe it's a tax map where it actually shows the other the size of the acreage of the adjoining um neighbors property, not the board of ed.
Right, that's correct.
Yes, because I believe and my eyes are not good. It's point one four acres uh for the subject property and the two adjoining property are the same size. Point one four acres.
Only I have one last time and it looks like the driveway apron, although in the right of way, projects past your side yard property line. I don't know if that creates a problem that's in the public right of way. All right, um, do you have uh any other witnesses, Mr. Song? Mr. Lee?
No, that's it. Um the uh the applicants are uh uh leave it to the board's discretion on their decision.
All right, um, board members, any other questions before we open it up to the public? Okay, um if there's anyone in the public who'd like to comment on this application, please indicate that by pushing the raise hands button. Claudia, has anybody indicated they'd like to speak on this application?
No, there are no hands.
Okay. All right, so we'll close the public portion. Um again, Mr. Song, we're gonna go into executive session. Do you want to say anything before we do that?
Um, other than uh just to reiterate that it um really comes down to the balancing of the positive and negative criteria. Uh this is new construction, so it will certainly enhance the surrounding community. And the variance in terms of what is being requested is no um significantly uh different from the other properties that have requested similar similar variance.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, thank you. Yep.
Okay, um, we'll go
Quick question. Steve, can I ask a quick question? Is this a spec house or you you plan to live in it?
Um, I'm I'm branded to market it.
Thank you.
Okay, Derek, I do have one question. Um the applicant keeps making reference to Okay, Derek, I do have one question. Um, the applicant keeps making reference to. Houses that are granted variances that are consistent with this. Is that in fact the case? If, you know, over the past number of years, you know, building on undersized lots. Again, it's routine to have the bulk standards met and we approve it as a matter of force.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure there's more identified three variances we granted within probably the last five years on Linden. One sixty-six Linden was a garage side yard setback. And I think the requirement was eight feet. Then the variance was granted for a four foot setback. Uh, one seventy-eight, similar situation, five foot variance was granted and then one ninety-four. Uh, Linden, a three foot variance was granted for a uh garage setback, so.
What about houses? I mean, uh.
Uh, nah, I haven't. I didn't look for that specifically, but I don't recall any houses. But I mean, I looked at the GIS of the existing houses just. Just now and you can't see there are, you know, houses that appear not to comply with the side yard setbacks, but they were not new houses.
Yes, we haven't, we haven't really approved any newer houses with a variation in the side yard on undersized lots. For the main portion, for the house itself.
Well, this house doesn't have a, is not asking for a side yard setback. Uh. It's for the driveway and the garage. I mean, that's not the house.
I'm asking about the house.
Yeah, I don't recall the house, but uh this house does meet the setbacks.
Well, for well, not for, yes, Michael.
Yeah, Derek, do you have what the lot width is on one ninety-four?
Check. Fifty feet.
And same width.
Uh, they all appear to be fifty feet.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Our combined, our combined side yard setbacks of. One feet. We're putting aside, putting aside the the um carport. Is what is twelve? It it might be twenty feet or is it less?
No, it's exactly twenty feet.
Exactly twenty feet. Alright, okay. I don't have any other question. Um, board members, comment?
I'd say my main issue would be. Uh, the location of the carport, not so much the the driveway. Um, one foot seems too too close.
I agree with you on that.
I I feel similarly, I I. I can't, I really appreciate a lot of the thought and attention, the intentionality of how the house. Is being built like and and the driveway, uh, but I I just, I can't. I don't have the experience to really be able to visualize whether that's gonna be oppressive or not, but it worries me a little bit that it's so close. And I I think the side yard setbacks are. Not arbitrary. I think there's some thought given to having that, you know, having some breathing space between properties. So that part worries me a bit. And not because I can, not because I can really picture what the difference would be in, but I, that's pretty close.
I'd like to uh agree with with you on that. Um, and to me, one and a half feet on the one side. As a side yard setback is way too small and uh, you know, I, in my mind, a redesign to make it three feet. Oh, I don't think it's going to do tremendous violence to the design of that house. Obviously, it would take a redesign. But um it would be closer to the combined. Existing side yard setbacks, which I think are ten point eight feet. And if you have the three feet, then it's eleven, so it's a little bit better. But still way below the twenty feet. That's uh the zoning at that point. Uh, the one and a half feet, I just, I cannot accept that.
I'd just like to clarify that the house itself uh has a combined setback of twenty feet. It, the 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 garage is the uh is the uh request for the variance for the uh one and a half feet. So it's the house itself does does comply with the uh with the side yard setbacks.
Well, I'm, I didn't quite catch that.
I'm sorry. Do you want me to repeat that?
No, I understood what you said. I just was looking at the 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 uh the memo and it didn't seem to say it that way, but maybe I'm misinterpreting it.
I don't know, maybe Derek.
Alright. I agree with my colleague. I think you ought to move the uh structure inward a little bit, not the house, just the carport.
Well, that could be accomplished. Uh.
Yeah, that's.
You know, it was it was a a a design that uh that. I guess took utility uh to a uh to a greater extent uh and hoping that uh that uh. That that minimal setback would be acceptable, but the garage uh itself. Could shift and, you know, making it a little more difficult to traverse, but not impossible. And I think that uh. That that sort of uh of modification is is certainly something that uh that that could be accomplished.
Is it a two car carport or one car?
Well, it's it's a small carport. Uh, it would be a two car carport if you had two small cars. Again, you know, we we're trying to make a modern house that um if you look at it, the the carport is six. Sixteen feet eight long and and eighteen feet wide, so it cannot accommodate SUVs. Uh, it probably could accommodate two uh small, it's very small cars and 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 in a way, it's sort of uh. Saying uh the intention is that uh that big cars are not necessarily something that a modern house is uh. Should it should be encouraging. Uh, and and we're going to provide a place for for cars, but, you know, we're not intending to uh. Provide a place for uh for, you know, uh, big cars, you know?
Yeah, so we, uh, as I mentioned before, we have the intention to make this house as clean as possible. So those carport actually we designed for uh the newer generation of the EV, the small EV car. So that's why we we design so that way. But as as we all, we talk about, I mean, if this a concern, I have, as an owner, I have no problem to. To get that couple shipping wards for um make it three feet in compliance with everyone's opinion. I have no problem.
If you parked a car on this, in the driveway next to the house, would you ever get in and out of the car on both sides?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
If you parked a car in the driveway next to the house. Could you get in and out of the car on both sides?
Sure. I mean, it's twelve feet wide, so.
Okay, that that's fine. Thank you.
I mean, it would be the, it wouldn't be your most, you know, the uh intention is to have people drive through and to park their cars in the rear. Cause that's where the doors are. There's a back door.
No, no, I understand. Uh, but that means to me, if you look at the plans up close, if you shifted the carport over a little bit. There's plenty of room to kind of.
I I, you know, and I and I guess, you know, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just, I'm just saying as as as. Uh, an intent to to provide the 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 ease of utility that was the intention. And uh and if 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 that's something that uh the board finds that is not acceptable, then, you know, uh. That's that's uh something that uh is has some flexibility to it, sure.
Um, I just to make a comment, can I, I just make a comment on on Steve's uh comment before. In fact, for this design, it's nearly very difficult to park a car in that driveway. Because we drive, we design this driveway as a lumber driveway. The lumber driveway basically only have two width of the, yeah, you 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 could not pop, you you have to drive through it. If you pop there, then the the glass, the water, all the things underneath a car is gonna damage your car. Right? So just keep it in mind. No, we are not.
It's sort of an old fashioned driveway in a lot of ways, you know, how how old fashioned driveways and and I live in, I live in the borough of Princeton. Uh, there are a lot of neighborhood houses that have have, you know, these things where we call them ribbon driveways. And they go back to a a garage that sits at the back corner of their house. Uh, and that was sort of the uh, the um. Inspiration, I guess I would say, uh, for how I I approached it. I live on Moore Street and I around the corner from Hawthorne and. And a lot of the old houses, that's the way they are and uh and um. That they don't necessarily comply with the ordinance, but in some ways, they uh they provide a a a you uh on a good utility. As we said, you know, some adjustment to where the carport could be uh to the boards uh uh. More comfortable uh with as they've approved others than, you know, it's so be it, you know, but that was sort of the intent. I mean, the intent is not. Uh, to um, the intent is to to to, you know, put the cars in back of the house as 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 uh. You know, as the uh the ordinances and the and the objectives of of uh of the planning has 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 tried to encourage. And that's what we're trying to work with. We're, so uh, you know, uh, can we be a little flexible? Sure. I mean, we'd be happy to do that.
You know what's in the yard next to the carport, the yard next to the yard over?
In the yard? Well, I think in the backyard, there's a, there's a garden shed.
On a proper, close to the property line or?
I believe it's right on the property line, but you know, as we said, that's an old house. I'm, you know, it.
No, no, I'm just, I'm, the only reason I'm asking is because I think it is much preferable to drive straight into a carport. And to angle in and out of it. So I'm just wondering what what. If you left it where it is, how intrusive would that be to your neighbor? And it doesn't sound like it would be.
Neighbor's existing situation, there's a, there's a garden shed right next to it. So a rather large garden shed. That's that's.
That that's. There is a shed there, but it's probably. Four to five feet off the property line, the Baldino's property on the right side. I was just there and I looked at it and that's, you know, um, I wanted to see the proximity of neighbors accessory. It is not close to the property line. It's a white structure and it's probably at least four feet.
Well, Michael, do you think, do you think, Michael, do you think the, you know. Should should be moved over there? I don't know, the the parking structure should be moved off the property line then?
Say that again?
Do you think it's too close to the property?
Um, yes, I I think. I I I can vote for some variance, but I I think, and I I think we've already been through this. They they're agreeable to moving it over some?
Yeah. I mean, what what we presented was what we thought our preference was and we hope that that would be acceptable. And and you know, I mean. That's that then now, you know, we're in a discussion. I appreciate the back and forth because that's very helpful.
Yeah, I I think it uh. You know, it's it's hard to defend defend the code. At at. A foot and a half.
Well, right. I mean, and the the codes have gone through changes and and I guess I I'm old enough to uh. To uh have seen many changes go from codes that uh made no sense at all with setbacks. And then they moved to maybe things that uh and but I also live in a neighborhood that uh that has built. That were built in nineteen twenty and they sit and the garages sit right in the corner and.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
You know, and and that's okay, but that's why we're here and we're trying to work through the process.
You know, the the houses, the houses that Derek cited, um, yeah, that they were. The restriction was eight foot at the time, you know, so the code's been adjusted to five foot.
Right.
You know, somebody thought that was the right number, but you know.
We approved this proposal of a three yard, three foot setback for the uh parking structure.
Do you want to make a motion to that?
Yeah, I thought that's what I did.
Yeah.
Okay, do we, so the, that's the, so the, the motion is to approve the house as is, but the carport. Needs to be three foot from the property run rather than one and a half feet. Or whatever the dimension is on the drawing.
Oh, the carport side yard setback is one foot. And then the drop, the parking setback and driveway setbacks are one and a half feet.
Even so, the driveway will stay the same, but the carport will move.
I would, I would leave the driveway and just move the carport.
The 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 carport would move from one to three. Okay.
Oh, alright. It's okay, I can accept it. I appreciate for your support.
Do we have a second for the motion?
Oh, second.
Is there any discussion of the motion? Okay, if there's no discussion, um.
We we see, we special, we do seem to be specializing in odd angles and of parking.
It's, yeah, it's it's what you call.
Uh, I think it's just the nature of uh of uh, you know, older, older neighborhoods being redeveloped and uh. And uh, you know, and having small lots and hopefully smaller cars and that can negotiate.
Well, it out that that all lineup, you can.
No, they they, the people have to get Cooper Minis, that's uh or Mini Coopers, you know, and then they'll have no problem at all.
Well, I I think it's also a factor of people wanting to build, buying properties and wanting to build houses that. Are bigger than the lot can accommodate with a driveway and.
I've seen with public, we probably don't want to go there. We don't probably don't.
It's never the house, Mr. Architect.
And consider the master print has been approved and now look at that song name.
I think, I think though that uh we've uh we've, we figured out a good compromise that uh that uh. You know, uh, takes into consideration, uh, you know, the board's concern of uh of of a proximity of uh of the structure. That that might be too close to the neighbor uh and and also and 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 one that is also acceptable to the owner. So, you know, I think uh.
Yeah.
I'm I'm happy that uh that we have uh, we have worked through and come to.
Yeah, you don't have the vote yet, you have.
No, I would, no, I, that's true, that's true, but we, we're talking about it, right? Talking about it.
Alright, okay. We have a motion, a second. We've discussed it. Any other comments before we take it to a vote? Okay, Claudia, please.
This Jim?
Yes.
Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. David? Mr. David?
We can't hear you.
Yes?
Yep. Okay.
Floyd?
Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Shriver?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you, it's approved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Much. Alright, happy holidays, everyone.
Holidays.
Don't we have a meeting next week, Derek?
It's at the IBN, no.
Oh, one, one administrative uh question. When I forward the letter, who do I forward it to, to the secretary?
Yes, please, to Ms. Cobell's, yes.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Happy holiday.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Hey, Steve, Steve Cohen. Yes, you've led us well this whole year, so.
Yes.
We made it to the end, you're a good, good leader.
You're a good leader, we're still talking to each other, so it's a good slide.
And I'm talking to everybody, gosh.
Yeah.
I'll take, I'll take what you said under consideration, Michael. I I respect that.
Uh, yeah, what I just said, what I just said.
No, what you said, I, well, thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome, you're welcome, you did.
Perfect year, thank you, good night.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, happy holidays.